So I know not everyone's in the meeting yet, but just to let everybody know we are live to the public right now.
Dan, are you on?
Yes, we are live to the public right now. We're just waiting for the YouTube stream to come up. We'll be going in here in just a minute.
You said we are live right now?
Yes, we are. All right, we're good to go.
Thank you very much. Do I have everybody? Missing Bob. Jay, were you able to reach Supervisor Berkowitz?
I do not reach Supervisor Berkowitz. He has to log on. I haven't tried.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead. I know we've got a busy agenda day, so we'll go ahead and get started. And for those of you joining us in the public, this is the Delmar County Board of Supervisors meeting this day, March 9th, 2021. And at this time, Kylie, can you please call roll?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
I am here.
Supervisor Starkey?
Here.
Supervisor Short?
Here.
Chair Howard?
Present.
And I'll wait for Supervisor Berkowitz to join us.
Okay. Thank you. Right, at this time, let's take a brief moment of reflection. Thank you. Dan, if it's possible, could you please bring up a flag? And all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, introduction of new employees.
Not aware of any.
Very good. County councils or anything to report out of closed session?
No, not today.
Okay, then at this time, I'd like to request any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda.
If I'd like to pull something on the consent agenda, would I do that here or wait?
Let's, we'll do it on the consent agenda, Supervisor Starkey. All right, let's go ahead and then, since there's none, go ahead and move into brief reports or announcements relative to Delmar County programs, projects, progress on two by two committees, goal committees, and board staff travel training reports. Valerie, why don't you go ahead and get us kicked off, please?
Sure, thank you. I attended Senator McGuire's roundtable discussion regarding SB 285. This is a bill which would pour $45 million into Visit California to implement a strategic plan to help with media and job recovery. It's a plan called Calling All Californians, and for every dollar contributed, we're likely to see $19 in return. This is a formula based on after 9/11, how the governor then championed to allocate tourism advertising, and California saw a 10% increase in a 12-month period. So, and I work with our local visitors bureau, and they are really good about sending information and articles, pictures, promotions to Visit California about our area on a regular basis, so we really should see the benefit of this particular bill, should it pass. I met with Greg Burns of Thorn Run. He's a very entertaining gentleman. I attended a Chamber of Commerce Fourth of July planning session. I was appointed as a co-chair along with Emily Reed, and subsequently met with Dr. Ray Walt, who gave us the green light to go ahead and start planning it. There's no guarantees, but it's looking somewhat promising. I toured the Department of Health and Human Services. I got a chance to sit down with Heather Snow and went over all the departments and all the functions of her department. And then I got an opportunity to go over to the Services Center and see firsthand the hard work that these individuals do with our mental health clients. The program offers cooking, scrapbooking, computer access games, emotional support, and so much more. It's a very good program. I attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting. I also crashed Go For The Gold meeting because it looked super interesting, and both were very interesting and helped me understand just how the chamber fits into promoting our businesses and community. I toured the Delmar County Transfer Station. Supervisor Short and I had the opportunity as a newly appointed Solid Waste Management Authority to get the VIP tour of the transfer station, and we learned a great deal about the station and obstacles that we face with regard to solid waste. I attended the Department of Health and Human Services new employee training. Again, Supervisor and Short and I were invited to attend the new employee training. It was entertaining and interactive. I attended the Redwood Coast Transit Authority meeting, a Delmar County Planning Commission meeting. I attended a two-day new Supervisor Institute training through CSAC. I attended Congressman Huffman's Last Chance Grade Stakeholders Meeting. And speaking of Last Chance Grade, I continue to get updates from, that's probably most of the board does, regarding the current status of Last Chance Grade. As of last night, they still were stating to expect 30-minute delays, one-way controlled traffic. Last Chance Grade performed as expected over the weekend with the heavy amounts of rain. Mud flow came down, but it landed on the catchment road and didn't fall into the main pathway. I received my first vaccination of the Moderna vaccine. Again, I want to remind people to call Public Health at 464-0861, Monday through Friday, to get on the list for vaccines. If you meet the criteria, you'll be scheduled, or they'll explain to you about when it will be your turn. It doesn't hurt to call to get on that list, because if they happen to have cancellations, no-shows, that sort of thing, they don't want those vaccines to go to waste. And that's how I was able to get mine, is I live close by. They called me. I was able to go there and get my first shot. I want to acknowledge again, once again, those volunteers who helped facilitate that distribution of the vaccine, with a special shout-out to Deborah Wakefield. She continues to just jump in and provide solutions to issues. She steps up, identifies problems, and coordinates volunteers. But I also want to acknowledge our very own Supervisor Darren Short. He spent his entire Saturday out there making sure to help get shots in arms, and we are grateful for that. Finally, I collaborated with the Delmar County Historical Society. It is Women's History Month in March, and we have a large population of women who have made history in our community. And every Monday and Friday on my Facebook page, I will highlight these women and tell their background story. And I thank the Delmar Historical Society for helping me provide that information. That is it.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Short?
Thank you Chair. On, on the 25th, I participated in another vaccination event at the airport. 300 people were vaccinated that day, and I wanted to get a, give a shout-out to Shelby Bowdenstab and all of the nurses from Public Health. They are a wonderful team, a very energetic team. To, to see them work there at the vaccination clinic was, was really inspiring. Also, our CERT, search and rescue, and Crescent City Fire and Rescue folks who volunteered to help on that day, I wanted to give a shout-out to them as well. I met with a student from Simon Fraser University and talked about some earthquake prediction technology, and it looks very encouraging. And hopefully, later on this year, we'll hear more about that. Met with Assembly Member Jim Wood, had a great conversation with him, a little introductory meeting. Met with Senator Mike McGuire and had a, had a great, great conversation with him as well. Met with Dave Schlegel and Randy Scott at Ambro WSG and, and talked about their company and, and some of their visions for the future. As Supervisor Starkey said, participated in the tour of the transfer station with Ted Ward and Kara Seymour there. They, they gave us a great tour. Also met with Greg Burns from Thorn Run, our federal lobbyist. As Supervisor Starkey said, it was a, it was an entertaining meeting, a real dynamic guy there, and learned what, what he does for our county as well. Attended that CSAC new supervisor training with Supervisor Starkey and, and also the Go For The Gold meeting with the Delmar Chamber of Commerce. At the, just wanted to point out at the, at the Saturday vaccination event, the second event, went very smoothly, and we got 438 people vaccinated that day. And, and again, thank you to CERT and Crescent City Fire and Rescue folks for volunteering to come out and help. And lastly, I attended the agenda review for Delmar Solid Waste Management Authority, and, and that is my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Short. Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes, thank you Chairman. Yeah, I had a few meetings along with a lot of constituent concerns. So had a North Coast Resource Partnership ad hoc committee meeting, dealing with forestry issues, a lot of policy decisions. Moving forward to that, although we don't, Delmar County doesn't have a lot of activity going on, we are being impacted by those decisions. So, good thing to be involved with. Had a dangerous crab task force executive committee meeting where we're setting up the agenda for the, the full dangerous crab task force meeting that's coming up later this month. Had a meeting with staff on some coastal issues, coastal discussion over some levees and such interesting discussions. Had a Delmar Local Transportation Commission meeting, Border Coach Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting. As was mentioned, Valerie attended her first Huffman's, as well as myself, attended the Huffman's Last Chance Grade Committee meeting. I hope she found that very enlightening. Things are moving forward. Still trying to eliminate some alternatives that we don't have to study or get in the queue if we can eliminate them because their impacts to resources are too great, or the cost is too high, or they're just not doing the job that we want them to perform as far as maintenance or whatever. So we're trying to eliminate more alternative routes so that we can narrow down on one or two routes that, that are going to be viable. So anyway, working with that, also along those same lines, still get a lot of calls and concerns about Last Chance Grade and what they're doing now. I gotta, I gotta give kudos to Caltrans. They have been doing an absolutely wonderful job. Not, not just informing us, but being out there onsite and having a plan on what they're doing next. They're gonna have these spiders come in there pretty soon and, and start clearing, clearing the debris off of the, off of the slide area. So anyway, it's very interesting and also imperative that they keep that road open, and they're doing a great job of doing that. I can't, I just can't say enough about them. They have really, really, really done a great job. And as was mentioned, the, there was another vaccine event, and I got my second vaccine. So I'm on the road to a different life, a different lifestyle, hopefully. Anyway, and, and thanks Darren and all the other volunteers, Deborah Wakefield, and, you know, all of those people that spent the entire day. Dr. Ray Walt was out there. I did talk to him for a while. Just everyone involved, what a great community effort that, that we've got going there, and we're continuing to receive a fairly large amount of vaccine. We just need to have events like this to keep it going. I'm sure Dr. Ray Walt will speak to that later, but that's it for me.
Very good. Thank you Supervisor Hemmingson. Supervisor Berkowitz? You're, you're on mute, Bob. Bob, you're on mute. I'm sorry, Bob, we still cannot hear you. Well, I'll, while you're figuring out that out, Bob, I'm just gonna go ahead with my board report, and if you could come on in after me, that would be great if we could figure out this technical issue for you. Jerry mentioned quite a few, few pieces, so I will try not to cover those, and so did Valerie and Darren. Did participate with a CSAC discussion and Director Layton of the Delmar Transportation Commission on federal allocations for transportation as it relates to funds coming down through the CARES Act to the states. CSAC and RCRC and the, the cities coalitions proposed a formula potentially that would impact Delmar County with zero funds being realized. And so we got on the phone with CSAC and our various lobbying groups to try to get that funding allocation to come down directly so rural counties are impacted by any increase from CARES Act to our transportation funds. So that conversation went well, and we, they saw the error of their ways and released the letter that went to the feds. Also participated in the gender review, talked with constituents on issues around Kings Valley Road. As Jerry mentioned, issues with flood control and levees within our area. Participated in the Delmar Local Transportation Commission meeting. Had several interviews and discussions and panel discussions around this upcoming memorial that we'll have on 3/11 for the Tohoku region of reminding us about the Great East Japan Earthquake. Obviously, it's on our agenda today, so I won't spend much time on it now. As Supervisor Hemmingson mentioned, attended the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting. Also attended the Going For Gold Committee meeting. As Supervisor Hemmingson mentioned, and Supervisor Short, and Supervisor Starkey, Caltrans is knocking it out of the park when it comes to Last Chance Grade. And keeping that north route connector open, they've done an incredible job, not only on communication, but making sure traffic flow continues. So big pat on the back to our friends at Caltrans. And as all, everybody mentioned, that vaccine clinic, our community volunteers, they are our true heroes. They're stepping up. They're getting our community to a safe place, so really gotta encourage and give a big shout-out, as everybody else did, to, to those volunteers. Great job, great job, folks. Bob, I see you found the mute button, so let's go ahead and get your report then.
Thank you. Well, I am still in the land of the living, who knows for how long. And by the way, I do not have COVID, so this is something else internal. And the doctors have me on quarantine. So I want to thank Valerie and whoever else took my meetings for me. I'm not sure how long this is gonna last. I'm hoping it won't last any more than a month or so. And in the meantime, I can take, I want to thank Valerie, of course, and anybody else who volunteered. And I hope to be in full force in about at least a month. So that's my report, Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Berkowitz. At this time, I'd like to go to our 10:15 timed item, which is our public comment period. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments as the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Kylie?
Chair, I have two written. Do you want me to go to the written first, or do you want me to go to online?
Please, the written comments.
Okay, so the first one I have is from Donna Westfall, and it says, "In 2019, I submitted a letter of protest to Barbara Lopez, treasurer tax collector, along with a copy to the BOS. The gist of my letter was to protest property taxes that go to pay for public education. This was prior to the pandemic. I do believe our kids' education is even worse since the pandemic. Too many children unable to read or do math. It's unacceptable. Because the state of California doesn't seem to be able to fix the problem, I'm suggesting we, Delmar County, succeed from the state of California and vote to join the state of Idaho. Also, I agree with all the reasons that Governor Newsom is under threat of recall. Sanctuary state, higher taxes, gun control, benefits to illegals, homelessness, government overreach, stopping the death penalty, and more as reasons to succeed from California. Please read my public comment aloud and make it part of a public record. Thank you."
Thank you Kylie.
And I have one more, and this one is from Jeff L. McCadden. And it says, "Let us take a close look at our local schools compared to others in the state of California, then against other state educational systems, and finally against the entire world. How do our local schools stack up against the rest? Our district profile at the California Department of Education, California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress for the 2018-2019 year, Delmar County Unified School District for all grade students and schools revealed the following scores. Language, English Language Arts, only 35.98% of this county's kids met or exceeded the state standard for English language. Level 1, 38.96% standard not met. Level 2, 29.07% standard nearly met. Level 3, 24.69% standard met. Level 4, 11.29% standard exceeded. Mathematics, only 25.48% of students met or exceeded state standard math requirements. Level 1, 47.31% standard not met. Level 2, 27.21% standard nearly met. Level 3, 17.33% standard met. Level 4, 8.15% standard exceeded. According to the National Assessment of Educational Progress at the National Center for Education Statistics, from a national public score of 0 to 500, California got a score of 235, meaning its 2019 average scale score is significantly lower than the national public. The state of California ranks 44th nationally. According to Pew Research, United States High School proficiency compared to all other countries. Science, USA ranks number 24. Mathematics, USA ranks number 30. Reading, USA ranks number 24. According to School Digger, for the years 2018 through 2019, the Delmar County Unified School District ranked 655th out of 826 districts in California. Out of five stars, the Delmar County Unified School District earned a one-star rating. If it were not for communist indoctrination, the school district is a failure. Regards, Mr. Jeff L. McCadden." And that's all I have for written. And Chair, I'm not seeing any hands raised online.
Thank you Kylie. Okay, well, since we're talking about youth and education, I think it's a good time to segue to our item number 14 timed item, which is Youth and Poetry in Delmar County presentation.
Chair, I just wanted to say, I just had a hand raise. I'm not sure if it's for public comment. Do you want me to see or?
Yeah, please.
Kevin Hawkins, you are on. You just need to unmute your mic?
Good morning, Board. How are we doing?
We're doing good.
Good. Hey, I wanted to make a quick comment in regards to the RFP that was sent out.
Excuse me, Kevin.
Yes, sir.
Are you gonna be able to join us for this budget item or this line item on our agenda, which is a little later on in our agenda?
Absolutely.
Okay, so yeah, this is public comment for just things that aren't on our agenda, so please join us for that.
Copy that.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're gonna circle back around to item number 14, and, and since we're talking about youth, I think this is a good opportunity to segue into where our youth are beginning to shine in our community and give a more positive light to this. So I see we're joined by Kelly Troyna, and Kelly, why don't you take it away?
Thank you so much Supervisor Howard, and thank you truly for inviting us today. My name is Kelly Troyna, and I am Sunset High School's English teacher. And I have the privilege of introducing you to someone very special. I'm not sure if you've heard, but this is the third year that Delmar County has been officially represented at the state level in the Poetry Out Loud program. And today, I get to introduce you to Alex Armstrong, our 2021 and 2020 Poetry Out Loud Champion for Delmar County. Now, before I introduce you, just to increase the suspense a little, I would like to ask Stephanie Latour, the Executive Director of Denaka, to share a little bit about this program with you, because it's really very exciting.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me to speak a little bit about a program that Denaka is very supportive and enthusiastic about, especially during March, which is Arts and Education Month. So for those who may not be familiar with Poetry Out Loud, I have a bit of information to help everyone understand the program and how Denaka is involved. Poetry Out Loud is a national arts education program created by the National Endowment for the Arts and the Poetry Foundation, and it's specifically for high school students. Since its start in 2005, Poetry Out Loud has grown to reach more than 4 million students and 65,000 teachers from 16,000 schools in every US state, the District of Columbia, and our four territories. So the Poetry Out Loud program encourages students to study great classic and modern poetry. Everything from William Blake to Robert Frost to Maya Angelou, and they do that by offering educational materials to schools and teachers. They provide a dynamic recitation competition for the students. It goes from classroom to school, county, state, and nationwide competitions. By participating in Poetry Out Loud, students build self-confidence, they master public speaking skills, and they learn about literary history and contemporary life. As Delmar County's Arts Council, Denaka has coordinated the program locally for the last three years. We provide technical program support for teachers and students. We provide expert teaching artists to coach the students in their understanding of the poetry and in their recitation, presentation. And we help to coordinate the school-wide and county competitions. We then lend our assistance as the county champion proceeds to the state and hopefully, national competitions. So this program is for all high school students in our county that includes students who are homeschooled. And although both Delmar High School and Sunset High School participated in the past, this year, due to distance learning difficulties, only one school participated in Delmar's Poetry Out Loud program, and that was Sunset High School. We're very grateful for Sunset High School's enthusiastic and committed involvement in the Poetry Out Loud program, because we believe it directly helps students learn more about their potential and the ability to propel them even further in their pursuits. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Stephanie. So you might think I'm committed to this program because I'm an English teacher, or maybe because I love poetry. That's really not what Poetry Out Loud is about, though. Poetry Out Loud is about empowering students to challenge themselves to do something new, to train their brains to remember something difficult, and to set one foot in front of the other to see what they can accomplish. During a time when a global pandemic has brought many challenges During a time when a global pandemic has brought many challenges and changes to our lives, we had more Sunset High School students step up to this rigorous academic challenge than ever before. Forty-seven students chose poems for our classroom contest, nineteen successfully memorized them and recited their poems and moved on to our school-wide contest. Three winners from each of our stable student groups competed against each other in order to earn the title of county champion, and our county champion has then been working to prepare three poems to present at the state level. The students who choose to participate in this make me deeply proud, not only because of their achievement, but because of the long trail of steps that each one has taken to get to this point. It takes courage. It takes humility. It takes patience. Each one decided to try to learn how to do something new, and with effort, found success, found failure, and found the strength to continue time and time again. That experience is the true value of Poetry Out Loud, and that is why I am especially privileged to introduce you to Alex Armstrong, Delmar County's 2021 Poetry. Good morning, Alex.
My name is Alex Armstrong. I am senior at Sunset High School. The California Arts Council recently asked me, "What does poetry out loud mean to me?" The arts mean everything to me. Poetry is an art I've recently just learned to enjoy. Poetry out loud has helped me by showing me how impactful my voice can be. It's guided the development of my beliefs and the character through positive feedback and encouragement, which has helped me to soar. From here, I know that I can truly use my voice to be a positive influence and pursue a challenging and rewarding career. I have become the leader of my own life. Now, I recite Invictus by William Ernest Henley. Out of the night that covers me, black as the pit from pole to pole, I think whatever gods may be for my unconquerable soul. In the felt circumstance, I have not winced nor cried aloud. Under the bludgeonings of chance, my head is bloody but unbound. Beyond this place of wrath and tears looms the horror of the shade, and yet the menace of the years finds and shall find me. It matters not. I am the master of my life. I am passionate, my soul. Thank you.
So we have so many reasons to be proud of Alex. I would like to offer to share with you the recordings that he has prepared for the state, so you can see what his final performances look like after about three months of preparation with these poems, without the technical difficulties that we get with Zoom. So that's wonderful. Tony is, I'm not, I'm not seeing him on here anymore. He had a couple of words to say. Just, we wanted to mention that Alex received a certificate of recognition from the California State Legislature, which is pretty awesome, for one of our students to be recognized at the state level. He also wants to call me out for being recognized at the state level too, for being the single teacher in Delmar County who participated. And you know, the challenges are real, right? We can feel them when we're on Zoom here today. But truly, our students are stepping up and pursuing academic rigor in incredible ways. You might hear all sorts of negative talk about what's going on in schools. If you want to hear the other end of it, you are always welcome to give me a call. So I want to thank you again for including us on your agenda this morning. Delmar County has so much to be proud of, and Alex Armstrong, our 2021 Poetry Out Loud champion, is one inspirational young person who deserves celebration.
Ms. Kelly, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Tony.
For some reason, my video is not working. Well, we can see a goose, Tony. Yeah, that's a long story. We had geese here at Sunset High School. I'm not sure why my video is not, oh, start my video. Well, let's, go ahead, Tony, if you could just, we're going to have to wrap it up here pretty quick, but. Yeah, I'll be quick. I just want to express again, thank you guys for having us on here today. And Alex Armstrong is, I don't know how many times we get recognized at the state level in anything in Delmar County, but you can add two to the list. And Alex Armstrong was awarded a certificate of recognition by the California State Legislature. The certificate even acknowledges his second year in a row accomplishment. It says, "You have worked hard, and you deserved wins at the county level. Speak for your dedication and passion for poetry." The second person who received an unexpected acknowledgement was Kelly Troyna, received a certificate of recognition from the state legislature, legislature, celebrating her incredible service to the students of Delmar County. As the only teacher in Delmar participating in Poetry Out Loud, you have shown yourself to be an amazing advocate for education and students' well-being. You go above and beyond for your students, helping them succeed and see the potential in themselves. We are all so grateful to you for the tireless effort you bring to Sunset High School and Delmar County as a whole. Again, this is state recognition for two of our county residents. Speaking of Alex, he lives in Klamath, so you're seeing some of the difficulties we have with our connectivity in Klamath over internet. He makes it as almost every day through the slide area to school. Right now, I believe he was streaming, he may have been streaming from one of our staff member, Robin Parker Payne's her home in Klamath. That's how dedicated that our students and staff are for one another. They show up for one another. I heard someone call in earlier, or one of the comments about education in Delmar County and what it is and the impact. Well, I'll tell you, Mr. Howard, they impact each other here. I've heard told that the greatest ability anyone can have is availability, and our students and our staff are available to each other. They show up for one another. And I always tell our kids, half the battle in anything is just showing up, having the courage to just show up, whether it's in a relationship, as a parent, a job, a marriage, facing adversity. Alex, Robin Parker, Kelly Troyna, our staff and students at Sunset, show up for one another. So thank you again for having us here, celebrating Alex, two-time Delmar County champ, and Kelly Troyna, and allowing us to be here today.
Yes, thank you so much. So right now, we are waiting with bated breath. The state officials are going to announce their decisions on, I believe, Monday morning.
Yeah, we will be looking forward to that report, Kelly, so hopefully, you could get it to the Board. It's so, it's rare that we get to provide a platform like this, and oftentimes, that gets lost under these uncertain times. But the more positivity that we could show about our youth succeeding during these times, the better off we are as a community. So I really appreciate your opportunity, and more importantly, your attention, that you've brought to the Board and our community through Alex. He's a, he's a star youth in our, in our community. So thank you, Alex, if you're still on, and appreciate your time. We're going to go ahead and move on, but I really appreciate you joining us.
Thank you so much.
All right, I would like to move on to item number, our ten thirty item, which is, "Hold a public hearing to take the following actions. Approve and adopt a resolution to amend the local coastal program through replacement of the current harbor land use plan with the Crescent City Harbor Coastal Land Use Plan, and propose by staff, direct staff, to make any amendments in the document consistent with the selected alternatives, and submit the land use zoning changes to the California Coastal Commission for certification, and modify and ordinance amending Title 21 Coastal Zoning of the County Code to include harbor-specific zoning chapters, and amend the area of B-10 and C-10 coastal zoning map, submit to certification by the California Coastal Commission." Do we have Heidi or Taylor with us here today?
I am available, Chair. Taylor is here.
Oh, hey, Taylor, welcome.
That was a mouthful. Thanks for reading off that recommendation. I think that, you know, I think that's, it explains well what we're recommending here. This is the Crescent City Harbor District, I'm sorry, the Crescent City Harbor Coastal Land Use Plan that is being put forward. This is a replacement of the current harbor land use plan that was certified originally in 1987. And this application was put forward by the Harbor District. They requested that the land use plan covering the harbor area be updated. So this, this will effectively update the county's local coastal program, or LCP, and only the harbor segment of our local coastal program. The land use plan itself covers, you know, goals, policies, and programs that guide future development of the harbor area, not only necessarily the Harbor District, but the harbor area of the county's LCP. And along with that, is included zoning, which is the implementation plan of the county LCP. And that is going to give you your permitted uses, you know, what you can actually develop in areas within the harbor segment. So this, this updated plan is, I think it follows the, the current plan pretty well. It's, it's very similar in the number of different land use designations and accompanying zoning districts that work off of the land use designations. Staff has worked with Harbor District staff for quite a while on this project, and we're happy to finally present it to the Board. The Planning Commission has held two different public hearings on this project, one in 2019 and one in 2020. The Planning Commission, after holding a meeting in 2019, received a large laundry list of items from Coastal Commission staff. Lots of recommendations were received in order to not only improve the plan, but get the plan to the point that it would be, you know, more palatable to certify. To be clear, the Coastal Commission needs to certify what the Board adopts before it is valid. So over the last year, staff and Harbor District staff and Coastal staff have worked to incorporate changes into the 2019 Planning Commission-recommended land use plan and zoning. And I think probably about 95% of the changes recommended by Coastal staff were incorporated. A lot were minor issues, you know, having to do with Coastal Act references, and some were major overhauls of, you know, the hazard portion of the land use plan, for example. But most were minor changes that were very palatable. I also want to say that over the course of two Planning Commission meetings, I don't think any public comment was generated. So that's one of the reasons for really highlighting in the, in the Board Report, issues that staff has with the Board of Harbor Commissioners' recommendation. In August of 2020, the Board of Harbor Commissioners recommended adoption of the updated land use plan with, with the updates that staff worked on over the last year. And that recommendation carried forward approval of the land use plan, but it also recommended amending the boundaries of the harbor segment of the county's local coastal program. So what the Harbor Commission recommended was adoption of the land use plan, but to reduce the harbor area, the, the area that this land use plan covers in the county. The, the current harbor area, if you look at a zoning map, there is harbor zoning that, that goes from the Harbor District down South Beach to the Beachcomber Restaurant property. So what the Harbor Commission recommended to do was to reduce the harbor area segment and bring that boundary to terminate at Anchorway. Again, I want to highlight how much more of a project that is. That would require a separate LCP amendment to change the harbor segment boundary, and it would delay certification of this harbor land use plan until such time that that segment resegmentation is complete. It would also, until that, that South Beach segment is designated with a non-harbor-specific land use designation and zoning district, that area would, would essentially fall under the Coastal Commission's permit jurisdiction. So there would be a lot of complications in, in doing something like that, and we would need a lot more information in order to go forward with, with the Harbor Commission's recommendation. So staff's recommendation is to maintain the current harbor area boundaries, not to change the harbor segment of the county's local coastal program, and to adopt this harbor coastal land use plan with those changes incorporated.
So, okay, thank you, Taylor, for walking us through the short version of that. I know we all have that document now in front of us. I'd like to ask the, the Board if there's any questions for Taylor at that time, at this time, before I open it up to public comment.
I just want to say that Taylor spent a good deal of time with me yesterday, walking me through this, so I'm comfortable today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Starkey. All right, then seeing no other questions from the Board, let's go ahead and open up for public comment.
Chair, I'm not seeing any hands raised online at this time.
Okay, very good. Let's go ahead and circle back. If the Board is feeling comfortable with this, then do we have any actions necessary, Board?
I would move to approve and adopt.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Hemmingson. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Short. Kylie, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz? Looks like you're on mute Supervisor Berkowitz. I'm going to go ahead and go on Supervisor Hemmingson. Thank you.
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. All right.
Yes, we need a second motion to modify the ordinance, and I would make that motion.
Did we capture that all in your motion, Jerry, or no?
Well, I hope so.
Okay, I wasn't sure. Joel, was that good enough with Jerry's motion? Correct?
Yeah, I think, you know, if everybody understands that what you just voted on was both parts. Nobody has the objection of that.
Thank you Supervisor Short, then we'll, we'll go ahead and keep Jerry's motion, which covers both items one and two. But I appreciate you stepping up on that. All right, so it looks like that motion passes. We'll go ahead with item number sixteen, which is a COVID-19 update from Dr. Redwell. Doctor, I see you're on the, the line with us.
Good morning. Can you hear me well?
We sure can. Thanks for joining us this morning.
Thanks for letting me be here. I will try and be brief today. I know you've got a busy schedule. Overall, I'd say that our situation is pretty good. We're continuing to do vaccination for COVID, which is a good thing. I think we're going to hold in the red tier, which is also a good thing. Case numbers could be better, could be dramatically worse. I'd like to see more of a downward trend in our case numbers, but we're seeing a lot of days with multiple reports, and then some days with very few. And so hopefully, that's a trend that will continue heading towards fewer reports. A lot of news on the horizon. There's been some changes at the state level for guidance, specifically about schools and school sports, and there's a lot of talk out there about that. We've been working with the local sports league leadership, myself and Dr. Haw. We've been working with the local sports league leadership, uh myself and Dr. Hoffman with Humboldt County. Trying to give them some guidance and some assistance, so we're making progress along that line. The CDC released a bulletin this week that I think is going to be catching everyone's interest about how vaccinated persons can relax their guard a little bit when they're in the presence of other vaccinated persons. It basically says that if you're vaccinated and you're in a indoors in a small group environment, one household basically meeting another household, and everyone's vaccinated, uh the masks can come off, the social distance can go away, people can go back pretty much to normal. I think it's kind of an incentive to get people vaccinated, and I think, I hope it works, because it's uh it's actually good news. It's also true that if you're vaccinated and you're with people who are low risk for getting serious disease, even though they're not vaccinated, you can also do the same thing, and uh that's also good news for a lot of folks, like grandparents who are now vaccinated and they want to go see their grandchildren that they haven't seen for quite a while, so. The CDC website has a lot more detail, that's just the high points of it. Our testing has uh seen a bit of an amplification this last uh couple of weeks since I reported to last. Optum Serv site is now up and running, uh it's taken the place of Verily. It's expanded our public testing to five days a week instead of three, including Saturdays. It's moving around the county, so uh like Verily did, there'll be a day in Klamath, and in addition to that, there's a day in Smith River. And I think the schedule is Tuesdays in Smith River, Wednesdays in Klamath, Thursday, Friday, Saturday in Crescent City. And uh it's a mini bus, so it looks like a big food truck. It's uh kind of a blue color with some orange markings, lots of COVID advertisements on the side. Uh, there's a canopy that they set up outside for checking in. So when you see that, you'll know you're in the right spot. I think in Klamath, they're doing it at the hotel like they were doing with the Val- uh Verily Test Site. And in Smith River, they're gonna use the parking lot for the old Ray's Food Place, because that's now the fire hall out there. And in Crescent City, we're using uh the parking lot for um Kidstown, Playtown, Play Area down in Front Street Park. So uh use the site, it can handle eighty tests a day, and we want to put it to full use. If we don't, we risk losing it. It's very clear from the state that they, this is a precious resource to them, and if we don't find the u- utility of it here, if we don't show that we're, we need it and that we're gonna use it, they will pack that bus up and send it off somewhere else. So really want to get the word out to everybody to use the test site, use the Optum Serv site. They do collect insurance information, the enrollment is online. Um, you can also call a help number. Both those things are posted at our website, and I think they were released yesterday in our our Public Service Bulletin. It's a little bit longer process to enroll than the Verily site. Um, ask a few more questions. They give you a username and a password and a unique patient ID number that you need to keep with you to reference your test results or to get tested at a later date. They keep an account basically for you within Optum Serv when you enroll. But uh once it's done, it's pretty easy. I I ran through it on Saturday myself. The testing process was very simple. It's drive up instead of drive through, so you drive up, park your car, you get out, walk into the uh up to the registration canopy, and then they escort you around the back of the bus, you do your test, and then you're done. Pretty simple. So really want to emphasize that today because uh we don't want to lose this service. The other nice thing about Optum Serv is that they are starting to do some vaccination in other parts of California. And a mobile bus like this, if that could be converted to doing vaccinations, we could start moving some vaccinations out to where people live instead of trying to centralize it all the time. And the last thing I want to talk about is vaccine in Del Norte. The profile is pretty good, you know, Rite Aid stepped up uh as part of the Rite Aid chain, a national effort, and they received a bunch of Pfizer vaccine. They went through it very quickly. I think they've done upwards of twelve hundred doses so far, which is quite a lot. Huge boon to the community to have Rite Aid up and running like that and getting that kind of supply. Um, we're really happy to see that. We also did a a second dose clinic out at the airport again over the weekend on Saturday. Uh, we were told it went really well. We think it went really well. We have a small clinic going on right outside my door right now, even as we speak. Uh, another targeted group that we're doing today. And we're um planning on starting operations at the fairgrounds uh beginning next week. We ultimately want to do two days a week. Um, we're not sure about the number yet that we're gonna do, but we're anticipating being able to do probably three hundred a day at some point. If necessary, so we're gonna start that and keep that going for as long as necessary. Uh, I think we're gonna continue to use the airport, at least from time to time. Uh, we've been really happy that they've offered that as a place for operations and as a drive-through site, it is absolutely ideal in a lot of ways. So we're gonna keep ramping up as more vaccine becomes available. Yeah, but you know, the biggest news for our county has been the stepping up of Rite Aid and and the fact that they became a distribution site through the Rite Aid chain. Because that kind of volume of vaccine is huge for us, for county our size. It's really helped a lot. And I think I'll stop there, take some questions. Uh, I'm sure there's a few.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, Dr. Raywell. Supervisor Hemmingson, please.
Yeah, uh, Dr. Raywell, uh, the the uh allocation of uh vaccine that uh Rite Aid gets, do they get that directly, or is that something that is funneled through the county? Does the county give the vaccine to them, or do they get their own allotment?
They get their own, the Rite Aid as a company gets a, excuse me, gets a direct allocation from the federal government, so it even bypasses the state level. Uh, we don't really have much insight into what they're gonna get or what their schedule is. Um, I've been in communication with their pharmacist, I know a little bit about who they've been seeing and uh their volume, um but they're basically following the basic tier guidance that the state has set down. Their allocation does not affect ours at all.
Okay, and they're they're uh, they have a freezer, do they, are they using one of the freezers that we got, or do they have a freezer, you said the Pfizer vaccine is what they're using?
Yes, we offered uh to make our freezer available if they need it, but they've been using dry ice that's shipped to them, and they replenish the containers with dry ice, which is the this, the system that Pfizer set up uh at the very beginning, and it does work. It's just it's a little more labor intensive to replenish, you know, pellets of dry ice every five days, but they're making it work.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, I want to back up on the new uh mobile service for testing, and uh are you obviously it's early and I'm not sure if you could tell, what is the turnaround time we're seeing? Has there been any change in that from moving to from Verily to this new vendor? Um, are we seeing a quicker turnaround time and results of those tests?
I have a sample of one that I can tell you about, which is me. I went in on Saturday morning, I got my test results Monday morning. So two-day window. I don't know if that's just because I was one of the first ones they tested. I don't have any clue if that, if the volume of testing is gonna affect that. I suspect not. Overall, statewide testing is down, including at the state lab, so it's actually a good time to get tested because it's usually when business gets very busy and lots of testing demand is high, that's when things slow down. But right now, it's about two days, which is pretty decent. We can, we can work with that, we can make that useful to us.
Okay, well, that that's uh, that's helpful to know, and then um I know we heard some great reports out by uh Board members that uh went through our community vaccination site out at the airport. What are your thoughts on that? Because right now, it seems to be uh very streamlined, extremely effective, and the group of volunteers out there seem to be um incredible. So you have any thoughts on that to share with us from your perspective?
Well, we like it. Like I said, it's it's really ideal for drive-through, and uh that makes it a lot easier in terms of what we have to do and the interactions with people who are there. It's a lot faster. We're just kind of worried that our volunteers are gonna get kind of fatigued, because we use a lot of volunteers to make that work. There's a lot of traffic control, there's a lot of people doing monitoring. You know, they've been great, they've, we couldn't have done it without them, there's absolutely no way, but uh we're, we don't want anyone to burn out. We're gonna, we're, and like I said, we're not really, we don't want to stop using the airport, it's just that we want to expand the options, and we we think that uh using the fairgrounds maybe allow us to use fewer volunteers, so we can rotate more people through and not call on them so often. That's kind of the goal uh of setting this up uh at the fairground site, because we think there'll be a little bit less traffic control, there'll be more of a uh easier system to monitor people. We won't have to have quite so many people roving the parking lot. Uh, that's the goals, so we're gonna try it and see if it works.
Okay, and then uh last question, and then I'll turn it over to another Board member if there's questions or questions from the audience. The the announcement by Johnson and Johnson with a third vaccine now and a single shot. Are you uh anticipating this specific vaccine to arrive in our community, and then how would that impact our overall flow of vaccine over the next month or two and helping to get a wider population vaccinated?
Yeah, I mentioned on the radio last week, I think that we were told we were getting an allocation, and we, I actually did receive it yesterday, so we actually have some doses of of Johnson and Johnson. It's just, you know, one more tool in the tool chest in a sense, but ideally, this is the vaccine that for now, we want to use to reach harder, harder to reach populations, people that are gonna be harder to get back for a second dose. You know, we have a fairly significant group of homeless people in in our county, and and this would be ideal. You know, a- as an example, uh some people who are homebound and it's hard to get vaccines to them to start with. This is logistically easier, because it's refrigeratable, so you can take it around with you in a refrigerator cooler. You don't have to try and rush to get everybody done before the vaccine time window wears out. You know, the other vaccines, you have six hours to use them once you bring them up to room temperature. So there's a lot more flexibility using Johnson and Johnson. I actually think it's a pretty good vaccine, you know, the efficacy numbers that people have been hearing about overall, quite a bit lower than the other vaccines, but uh the key point about their efficacy is that for preventing severe disease, they rank just about as high, they're above ninety percent, and I think in in their efficacy study, they had zero people die who got vaccinated with Johnson and Johnson, which is a key point as well. So for the kind of outcome that we're trying to prevent, you know, people getting really sick with COVID, it seems to work just as well as the others, and it's a single dose. And the studies were done in parts of the world where some of the variants were active already, so it's y- it's been tested against the variants, the South African variant in particular, and the Brazil variant, uh which is also good news for it as a, as a long-term vaccine. So I think it's gonna be fine. I I think it's as good as the others. I don't want people to get hesitant about it, because they think the efficacy rate's too low, or uh the others are much higher, that sort of thing. For us, it's it's just another tool in the tool chest, and it works as well as the others, so. The take home is, if you get, if you get the opportunity to get vaccinated, get vaccinated with whatever is available, because they all do the job. And we hope they continue to do the job, obviously, but for now, they're, they seem to be working.
Thank you, Doctor. Any other questions from the Board at this time? All right, we're gonna go ahead and open up for public comment.
Chair, I'm not seeing any, oh, one moment. Linda, you are on, you just need to unmute your mic.
Good morning, Dr. Raywell. There was a um rumor control, so there was a fifth death in Del Norte County, and it was twenty-four hours after he had been injected with the uh Pfizer vaccine. Is there any truth to that?
I don't think anybody has died who's been injected with a vaccine. So I would say no, there's no truth to it.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Chair, I'm not seeing any other hands raised.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you again for joining us, Dr. Raywell. Uh, your information is always important to get out to a wide breadth of the community, and really also appreciate the radio spots that you do. It's uh, it reaches a lot of folks. So continue to do this, please.
Thank you for your support, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and present to you. I'll see you next time.
You bet. Thank you, Doctor. All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on with item number seventeen, which is a timed item. Approve and adopt a joint proclamation remembering March eleventh, two thousand eleven Great East Japan earthquake, and receive a memorial video reflecting on the relationship between Rikas and Takata and Crescent City, as requested uh by Chair Howard. And um anyways, I'd like to uh take this in two parts with the proclamation first, if possible, and I believe also for this item, we have a a similar joint proclamation from the Senate and the Assembly that uh I I see that both Aaron Dunn and uh My Johnson have joined us today. That um I'm hoping one of them will be able to read that joint proclamation that uh Assemblyman Wood and Senator Maguire have also thought to present on this matter today, but let's go ahead and uh take up the Board's proclamation first, if we can. And if there's a motion for that proclamation, I'd be happy to receive it at this time.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you Supervisor.
I will second.
Thank you Supervisor Short. All right, um, let's go ahead and open it up for public comment on the proclamation.
Give me one moment. Linda, you are on. Looks like you're muted, Linda.
Well, boy, all right, thank you. Um, the proclamation uh was great. I was unaware that we had one single death in Del Norte County of a young man who decided to go down to the beach and take pictures of the tsunami and got swept away, and that was very unfortunate for him, but I, through your proclamation, I was made aware of one single death in Del Norte County, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Kylie, any further public comment on this item?
I'm not seeing any at this time.
Okay, very good. Let's go ahead and bring it back to a vote.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Sarky?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Thank you Kylie. Now I see that uh Aaron Dunn is here and and My Johnson. Appreciate you guys joining us today. I I know uh Senator Maguire has uh really wanted to be here with us today, and uh obviously, he's indisposed with uh much more important things going on, and and uh I'll let you guys talk about that if you want to. It's entirely up to you, but we're here today to uh really recognize the uh proclamations, and more importantly, I'm super appreciative of both the Senate and the Assembly also recognizing this very important day on the ten-year memorial of this tragic event. And uh really reflecting it back on that for our community and what it's meant over the last uh decade. So um Aaron or My, I I appreciate you joining us today. Is there any uh, anything you'd like to share with us at this time?
I can jump in if that would work, Chair. Rebecca Wachsberg um with Senator Maguire's office. I'm his Chief of Staff. He is so sorry he can't be there with you today. Um as, I'm not sure if you've mentioned, but um a last-minute appointment for the baby, and we know that this is the um first of many times that uh the baby who is due on the twenty-seventh will cause um this kind of disruption in his life, um but it really killed him, and he was literally texting me saying, I think I can still make it, I think I can still make it, and finally, we had to say, you gotta concentrate on the family, so thank you for having me. And um I've also gotten to witness this amazing um sister city relationship, and it really is um a remarkable gift for uh both locations. We're really thankful to present this resolution um to Del Norte County and Crescent City to commemorate all the hard work, perseverance and growth that has occurred in the last ten years as a result of the tsunami. Um, it's improved emergency preparedness in Del Norte County and across the state and country. It's really um served as an inspiration of of lessons learned from um other areas, and seeing the relationship that is fostered between Del Norte County and the rest of the world through their sister city is just really powerful. So proud to represent Del Norte County and want to thank all the amazing county and city leaders and staff who've helped rebuild the harbor and make this a better county to live in, and um we will have the resolution uh delivered up there uh shortly, and we're really happy to be a part of today.
Thank you for joining us, Rebecca. It's it's great to have you here. Um, that's terrific that the the baby Senator Maguire's uh newest addition to his family is is coming on board, and uh I know he's always eager to join us, but I I think we all know that family is very important in this case, and we appreciate those efforts, and more importantly, staff uh coming on board today to to recognize the importance- And we appreciate those efforts and more importantly, staff coming on board today to recognize the importance of this day and this memorial. So thank you again. Aaron, would you like to say some words on the Assemblyman's part?
I would, thank you Chair Howard and Board of Supervisors and Senator Maguire's staff that's here today. I bring greetings from Assemblymember Wood who just admires so much the resilience and the collaboration and the the gift that's come out of this tragedy that happened. I remember it so well, the the slowness of the water coming in was just fascinating to watch and to watch it unfold. And economically, it was rough and but you all, as always, Delnart County comes together to be a united community. And what a special thing to have happen out of this tragedy and disaster to have a new sister city formed. And I've watched that that relationship grow over the years as well and the boat and the kids going to Japan. And what a what a wonderful that opportunity that was and and to have that come out of such a tragedy is is really special. And so congratulations on this this day and it's what a great way to honor it.
Thank you, Aaron. Really appreciate your time. And thank you again for Senator Maguire's staff, Rebecca and My for joining us today. Supervisor Short, if you don't mind, I'd like you at this time to read the proclamation into the record.
It'd be my pleasure, thank you. This is a joint proclamation remembering the 2011 Tohoku earthquake and tsunami. Whereas on Friday, March 11th, 2011, a great earthquake with a magnitude of 9.1 struck the off the coast of Northern Japan's Tohoku region. Whereas the shaking went on for several minutes and was with such great force that people in the communities closest to the epicenter had a difficult time standing. And whereas the great earthquake damaged roads, crippled utilities, including phone networks and electricity, and otherwise destroyed critical infrastructure, including the Fukushima nuclear power plant. And whereas the tsunami notification was issued by the Japanese Meteorological Society within minutes, warning of a tsunami up to 10 feet high and encouraging evacuation of coastal communities. Whereas the tsunami that followed was much larger than was forecast, over 45 feet in some locations, creating widespread destruction, loss of life and sorrow. And whereas the disaster claimed 15,894 lives, left 2,546 people missing, created 341,411 evacuees and refugees and caused nearly $300 billion in damages and left Japan with multiple crises across social, economic and political sectors. And whereas the 24,000 plus residents of the coastal city of Rikuz and Takata, Iwate Prefecture was one of the areas hit hardest in the 2011 disaster. Minutes after the 9.1 earthquake, a tsunami more than 45 feet high leveled the city, devastating five square miles of low lying town of the low lying town. And whereas the tsunami also resulted in approximately $50 million in damages to the Crescent City harbor and the loss of one life in Delnart County. And whereas on April 7th, 2013, a little over two years after the Tohoku earthquake, a lone boat washed ashore in Crescent City, California. The boat belonged to Takata High School in the city of Rikuz and Takata. And whereas through the leadership of local students and community members, the boat Komomi was cleaned and returned to Rikuz and Takata, becoming a symbol of hope and a catalyst for relations between high schools. And whereas a former a formal sister school relationship was signed in 2017, followed by a joint agreement of the city of Crescent City, County of Delnort and City of Rikuz and Takata forever joining us as sister cities. And whereas the sister city agreement signed by both the city of Crescent City and the County of Delnort memorializes the mutual desire of our communities to strengthen ties of friendship and to develop collaborative activities and efforts in areas of business, culture, emergency planning and disaster recovery with the hope of contributing toward peace and prosperity in the world. And whereas Mayor Fotoshi Toba has a vision of rebuilding Rikuz and Takata as a global city of purposeful inclusion, a grant was secured through the U.S. Embassy Tokyo and administered by the Delnart County Board of Education to bring 30 students of Rikuz and Takata to Crescent City for an immersive training workshop to help further this goal. And whereas through the relationship, economic opportunities have begun to develop in both Rikuz and Takata and Crescent City. And whereas many lessons were also learned from the natural disaster that have forever changed tsunami modeling, public education, warning methods and evacuation planning. And now therefore be it resolved that May 11th, 2021 be a day of remembrance in the Crescent City, the city of Crescent City and the County of Delnort, California, that our citizens are encouraged to engage in friendship and kinship with those in our sister city of Rikuz and Takata. That from this great disaster and ensuing hardships be forged new awareness, understanding and kindness and that we do not let the lessons go unnoticed and thereby commit to take measures to enhance our own preparedness so that we may respect the lives lost and protect those lives we have in our keep today. Proclamation will be signed by Jason Greeno, Mayor of Crescent City and Chris Howard, Chair of the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Supervisor Short. We prepared a short memorial video at the request of Consul General San Francisco of Japan that we'd like to play at this time in remembrance of this day. If you could please set your screens to gallery view, it might be helpful for viewing the video. Dan, if you could hear me, I'm hoping that we could have some sound with this.
Well, we're not sure why it's not coming through. We checked the boxes for it, so we're looking at it.
Okay. Well, that's too bad. Why don't we go ahead and stop the video then, Dan? We could play it later if we could work out the bugs with that. Thank you. Sorry about that, folks. There will be opportunity to potentially hit this later if we can work out the bugs with the video. It's about a 10 minute memorial specific to a presentation that we'll give on March 11th at the Consul General's request. I'd just like to say at this time, this has been a very powerful relationship that was essentially developed out of tragedy, both communities being affected. Rikuz and Takata in the Tohoku region, over 20,000 lives, a great loss of life. But more importantly, as we learned from an invitation to the United Nations in 2019 that Japan, through this loss of life, has made it a vow that not another loss of life from tsunami would hopefully occur again. And then they made that their mission throughout the world, through the United Nations to ensure that through emergency preparedness, that we are better prepared as a community to react to natural disasters of this nature. And I think we're getting there as a community and to have our OES staff and our staff of the cities and counties and all our public safety members, more importantly, prepare for these type of natural disasters. We could ensure that Japan's request to not have one loss of life during this type of event come to fruition. So again, really appreciate this opportune time by both the Senate and the Assembly to recognize the importance of this day. And for us as a community to reflect back about what this means to us, what it meant to our students through one simple act of kindness that brought two very distant communities together that not only helps support students, exchange and travel, economic venture, but also government to government relations that will improve our operational safety here in our community. So I thank you for your time and if there is any other comments from board members, I'd welcome them before moving on to the next agenda item.
I want to give kudos to Supervisor for all the work that he's done on this. If it wasn't for Supervisor Howard, we would not have had this sister city or sister county. We would not have been able to develop the relationships that we have had over the past several years. He does not get the credit that he deserves and I would like to see him really get the credit that he truly deserves on this project.
Thank you for your comments, Supervisor Berkowitz. Yeah, this this is a shared effort and I'm humbled by your comments. But at the same time, it's been a community effort where many of us have come together over several, several, several years to ensure the importance of this relationship. And more importantly, what we could learn from each other as a community through tragedy is recognized. So I appreciate your comments and more importantly, reflect back on all those that have helped to get us to this point today. So with that, I'm hoping IT could work out the video. We could try to play it a little later. If we can't, be sure to join us at 3 o'clock on March 11th this Thursday. Invitations have gone out on Facebook and we you'll be able to see the trailer then as part of a 30 minute segment by Council General reflecting back on this important day. Let's go ahead and move on to item number 18 on our agenda, which is a timed item for conversation with the Juvenile Probation Department, Mr. Raymond and SB 823. Lonnie, are you with us today? I see Kylie, is he with us?
Chair, I see. Don't, yeah, give me one second, I gotta move them to.
Thank you.
Morning, Board.
Good morning.
So I I've got some slides if I'm going to be able to share those. If not, then I will roll through a discussion on SB 823. So this might be either a happy or a sad thing to you, but I'm not going to do an update on juvenile probation at the moment. I wanted to focus on SB 823, which is realignment of DJJ, Department of Juvenile Justice. I will. Kylie, if that pops up, if I have the ability to share, just shoot that to me and I'll continue to roll through as I'm able.
You you should be able to just share your screen, Lonnie. I don't have any control over it. There should be a link or a button that says share your screen on the bottom. Dan from IT, if you can chime in, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, it should. Lonnie, do you see it at the bottom of your screen?
No, unfortunately, all I have is chat and razor, lower my hand. So I'll just roll with what I have.
Thank you for trying to go with the flow, Lonnie. It seems like we're having a lot of technical issues this morning.
No worries, here I am apparently. Thank you, Dan. And I will see if I can get this up and rolling for you. Give me just one moment. All right, are you able to see that slide?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so this is what I'm looking to cover today. What is SB 823 and what it requires of the counties? What we've done locally and on a statewide basis as well, because this affects everybody statewide. And next steps for Delnart County. I will caveat this that I'll probably answer some of your questions, but possibly raise even more. If there is something that comes to mind as I go through this, feel free to stop me. And I will try and either put you off until that point comes up or address it when you raise it. So that's what I'm looking to cover today. SB 823 was passed last year. It was a desire of the governor to shift the Department of Juvenile Justice, which formerly before it was DJJ, was California Youth Authority, CYA. A lot of people still use that term as well. But his desire, as expressed in his initial budget last year, was to realign DJJ under CDSS, so Department of Social Services, rather than the Department of Corrections. And that was his initial proposal at the beginning of 2020. Then COVID hit, budgets went every which direction. And it was basically understood he wasn't going to be able to make that shift the way he had envisioned it. So probation across the state, we were in conversations with the governor's office and keeping an eye on this very closely. It got into August, the end of the legislative session. We didn't see a way where this was going to occur and we're not expecting 823 to come at us the way it did. It was a it was a spot bill and rewritten and introduced in August, August 24th. It was passed by the Senate and the Assembly on August 31st, a week later. We had very little input. This was not discussed with the probation chiefs across the state, so this came as a surprise to us. And it was signed by the governor in September, end of September. Essentially, what SB 823 does is dissolves Department of Juvenile Justice and realigns the youthful offenders that are housed there or committed there by the courts back to the counties. We become responsible for custody commitments if the courts order that these youth are to spend time in custody. The the youth that we're talking about. No, I'll go to the next slide. The youth that we're talking about are 707B youth. This is a code in the Welfare and Institutions Code that defines serious and violent offenses committed by juveniles. So this isn't the bulk of our population, this is a small, even statewide, a small slice of the juveniles that we deal with in the juvenile criminal justice system. So for those specific youth that commit these serious and violent offenses, if if they had in the past gone to DJJ, now we are responsible for finding housing for them. Typically, the idea was to try and keep them close to home, house them in county, provide them services in our juvenile halls or other secured facilities until they're released. Make sure I'm still on track. So the bill provides that DJJ intake closes on July 1st of this year. So we need to have a plan in place for what to do with any youth that are committed by the by the courts by that date. Initially, there was no closure date for DJJ. I guess the well, there's a lot of holes in the bill, but this was one of those and there was no hard closure date. So no one knew exactly when it would happen. The expectation was that it would likely happen by attrition as youth were paroled out or served their terms. In the governor's budget this year, he actually proposed closing DJJ by June 30th of 23. So the youth that are currently in custody from across the state will remain there until they're either paroled out or serve their term and DJJ will shutter its doors by June, the end of June 23. I put in there currently, you can see. Uh I put in there currently, you can see there's about 700 youth, that was at the beginning of the year, December 30th, I think the numbers were run. Uh 700 youth in DJJ custody from across the state. The plan requires or eight twenty-three requires that the counties come up with a local plan for our local youth. And how that is propagated is it was placed on the back of the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council, which is a local body. I chair along with a number of other justice partners. And we formed a subcommittee, the bill requires formation of a subcommittee and creation of a plan through that body that then comes to you, the board, for approval. And so that is kind of the general gist and outline of what we're looking at. I've got some demographics to kind of give you an idea of uh what we're dealing with statewide and locally. Uh this is statewide numbers uh broken down by regions across the state. You can see the northern region, that's 14 northern counties there in the middle, and this kind of breaks down the percentages of offenses. That the youth committed to DJJ, um how they're, they're parsed out. One of the things that jumped out at me when I saw this for the first time, the high, um the high numbers or percentages for arson. In comparison to the rest of the state for the north, as well as sex offenses. Uh and that comes bear born, if that is borne out, as you'll see when you look at our local numbers. And here's some of that detail. So this is the same chart on the left um from statewide numbers and our particular county uh breakdown on the right. What this is looking at uh for our numbers is a total of 30 cases over the last 10 years that would qualify. Now, that doesn't mean these kids have been committed to DJJ, uh our. Two commitments, our last one, as it were, was in 2007, so we had a, a youth committed to DJJ in 2007. And after that, we had no youth committed until last year in 2020. So we went 13 years with uh no DJJ commitments coming out of the court. That doesn't account for all of the youth that do actually commit these offenses. Uh so we have about on average, three youth every year who are referred. They've committed some offense, law enforcement gets involved, writes a report and those are, are put into the process for prosecution. At the end of the day, the number that actually shake out on the other end is about 17, 1.7 cases per year. Are actually found true, so those youth go through the court process and the charges against them are found true. All of those, except for the one last year, are placed on probation and we supervise them locally. But they do have an offense that qualifies them uh for this kind of custody commitment if the court makes that ruling. As you can see, when you're looking at our numbers that are broken down, sex offenses are a huge, huge component locally. Um it's about 57%, I think the number was. So over half of the cases that we deal with that are, that qualify for a DJJ commitment or a custody commitment. Uh our sex offenses, assault is another large percentage and then we have a small percentage robbery and carjacking. Uh and those, those charges, we haven't seen any of the other charges. Uh we did actually have one um referral for murder charge that wasn't sustained, it did not work its way all the way through. Uh the court system and so there was no finding on that case. Uh but generally speaking, we don't see a whole lot of those other offenses come through. So what steps have been taken, um the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council did form a subcommittee. To work on the, the DJJ realignment plan, so we're currently working on the local plan. We've been meeting about every uh two weeks or so since late January. Going through what our demographics are trying to pull those pieces together and figure out. Uh what our capabilities, our uh resources are in county. Uh whether we're gonna be able to house our youth um or not, what programs and opportunities we have for those youth if they are committed to custody. Or not, um and so that's currently in process. There are a couple of specific issues that we are looking at and trying to address. The biggest one that I mentioned is can we house our own youth? Looking at our numbers, uh both youth that have been committed to in the last 13 years. And the number of youth that have eligible offenses but are typically placed on probation and never ordered to custody commitments by the court. Our inclination at this point is that we would not be able to house our own youth, given the facility we have, the programming resources that we have. And really the, the number of youth that we have. There's a lot of different nuances that go into that discussion, but where we're going right now is looking at partnering with other counties. To house youth that do have custody, custody commitments. So we're focusing on, as on this list, we're focusing on being a partner county and trying to, to. Create some relationships with other counties or create part of a system that we would be able to utilize if we do have a custody commitment. Another part of, or some other things that we're trying to consider is. If we did have a custody commitment, what kind of services would we require? As you saw with uh with our numbers, um it's likely that we would have sex offenses as a, a very likely possibility. And sex offenders are typically requiring a higher level of uh programming and care while they're in custody. So we would be looking for a specialized type of uh custody commitment that can actually address those underlying issues. Statewide right now in DJJ. Sex offenders make up somewhere between three and 10% of the population, uh so it's a fairly small population statewide. So it's not reasonable to think that every county would be able to provide those types of uh secure custody and program placements. So that's a big challenge, uh another specific challenge that's being looked at statewide, not just a county issue is females. Uh because females need to be housed in their own uh programs. And they make up less than 5% of the statewide population. So even though we as a county are tasked and responsible for trying to figure out what our plan is for our youth. This is really a statewide issue. And that's where this comes in, so trying to implement and make this happen. The probation chiefs across the state have identified that there's some significant challenges and needs. Particularly when you're looking at those specialized populations. That it's tremendous burden for individual counties to try and provide custody programs for those small populations. And so where we've come to in our discussions over many months is. Uh we believe it's necessary to create something of a consortium, uh in my terms, the way that I try and wrap my head around it, it's like DJJ insurance. CSAC uh County, uh Association of Counties has created some structures that we're kind of looking at. And trying to draw some ideas from, but essentially what it would be is an organization that assists and helps counties. Uh create uh possibilities for custody placements with, when it's necessary, uh provides technical assistance. Essentially, it ensures that if we do have that one case that pops up every 10 years, every 13 years. I'm not gonna be on the phone calling 15 different counties trying to find somebody who can take this youth. Uh it creates an environment where I know if that case comes along, I'll be able to place that youth in an appropriate place where they can get the programming that they need. So we're looking to create a seamless continuum between uh the bulk of our justice system and the small population. Trying not to. Suck up all the resources that we have available to us. By trying to recreate the same types of programs in each county and we're trying to avoid widening the net. And having these youth that do commit this, these young folks um be transferred into the adult criminal system. So the consortium would help us avoid a lot of those pitfalls, um create a statewide basis. Uh for us to be able to find housing and programming for these youth. Um we're looking to take down barriers that um differences in counties might create and. Try and create a, an environment where we don't have too few options or too many options, again sucking up those resources. Equalizing access for our youth, um that's a, a significant concern because different parts of the state have different resources. And we all need capacity, one way or the other, uh we need a place to be able to house our youth. I know I'm screaming through this, I'm actually taking longer than I, I wanted to, but uh next steps for us. What I would ask, and this is CPAC, the Chiefs Association. Uh our big push right now is to try and set up this consortium. Uh we believe it's necessary and really the only way that we can make this realignment viable. And work for all the counties across the state and the youth involved. So likely, we're going to need assistance and I mentioned that CSAC had models of this type of organization or structure. Uh created before and so as we work through this, it's very likely I'll be reaching out to you again, the board. Um for your help and assistance in coordinating with CSAC and RCRC, because uh a lot of rural counties are struggling with the same things that we're struggling with. Um we're going to work to create the county plan, finish that and get it to you for approval, so that we're ready. For. Essentially implementation come the end of June. So um again, I know I screamed through that and possibly created more questions than I answered. But I wanted to at least give you a brief and an outline. I'm available for any questions that you wanna try and tackle right now.
Thank you so much Lonnie, oftentimes um. We, we talk to you individually as board members, but the community at large, the impacts we always say. From legislation at the state level is uh it, it hurts small rural. And oftentimes, uh the community doesn't get to hear this, we hear it directly from you and generally by the time it's too late to do anything about it. And so I really appreciate um. Your time today to not only inform the board, but inform the community about these legislative mandates. That generally come without uh funding and how they impact small rural counties, but in particular Del Norte. So your, your uh presentation all the long. Um it was extremely informative and better helps prepare us as a community and as a board to where we need to focus time and energy and support your department. So I, I would at this time like to open it up to uh any board members if there are any questions uh for Lonnie at this time. Please Darren.
Yeah, Lonnie, if you, if you don't mind, just, just an approximation, how many youth are on your case load right now?
I should have anticipated the question, uh last I looked, I think we had about 40 kids on probation right now. Um yeah, so our numbers aren't huge, um but they do keep us hopping.
Um you know. That's a big number to me.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of those kids, um a, a significant number of them because of the resources and. The resources we have locally and the situations and circumstances that they come from. Um we've had a lot of kids in placement, so either in foster care or therapeutic placements uh in other places in the state. We've been working to try and get those numbers down and get those kids back, either back in home or back in stable placements. Uh but those cases in particular take up a lot of our time.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Supervisor Starkey.
Yeah, I have a quick question, I was a little surprised, you said um that 17 cases of seven oh seven B offenses in the last year?
No, last 10 years.
So only 17 total seven oh seven B cases in the last 10 years?
Those are cases that have been found true, so we end up with about 1.7 cases per year that are actually found true. Those again historically have been placed on probation, so we're supervising those in the community.
Right.
So.
Well, I just wanna make sure that the public knows that, that in order to get to DJJ, you have to fall within this specific category and that's called a seven oh seven B offense. So that's actually fair and so they're just, those are the adjudicated youth, you said there was 30 cases total.
Correct.
And 17 of those were adjudicated, of those 1.7 most likely get placed on probation.
Uh yeah, so 17 cases were placed on probation, if you average it out per year, we end up with 1.7 a year.
Okay.
So a little over one a year comes through, so we're, you know, we're getting those kids placed on probation, working with them. Um finding programming and other opportunities for them.
And just also then, if I'm, I haven't been in the field for a while, but just so the public knows is that. They always attempt to do the least restrictive.
Yes.
Punishment and so then it graduates up, so that's a very normal behavior for probation departments to attempt local services first.
Correct.
Alright, that's all I had, thank you, I, I could talk a million years about this, but that's all I.
It's good you understand it Supervisor Starkey. Supervisor Hemmingson, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, I did, uh thank you, uh yeah. I can't talk for hours on it because I certainly am one of those ones that don't understand what the state is trying to do here Lonnie and that leads me into what. Uh what I'd like to say is how, how do you feel this is differing from what we've already been doing? And how does the state expect us to find resources to do, implement these programs? Uh because if we had the resources, we probably would be doing it if we're not already. Uh how, how is this gonna differ from what we're doing right now?
Um as far as practice before that custody commitment happens, uh it's really not necessarily gonna change our practices. Um as Supervisor Starkey said, the practice in juvenile justice is to try and rehabilitate and get those kids back on track. Um that's the whole purpose of the system. And you see that through our history of having those regular qualifying cases, but those kids are placed on probation for us to work with. So up to that custody commitment point, I don't see it changing a whole lot of what we do. Um it's possible, so one thing I, I had in my notes and I just skimmed by. Um we are getting some funding pushed down by the state, we're getting small county minimum. Um because we haven't had any qualifying cases, so when you go through their formula, we end up with uh $250,000 per year. And the way that's calculated by the state is 125,000 per youth per year. That's their estimation of what they're spending at DJJ right now. So we will get 250,000 per year to implement this. A, a significant chunk of that needs to be uh structured in such a way that we can pay for a commitment if it happens. But one of the things that we're discussing on the subcommittee level and trying to incorporate as part of our plan. Is figuring out whether we can take some portion of that funding and provide some services or support. For those youth that qualify, but they're on probation, so we can try and help bolster the services that they have, so they don't end up getting. Uh a custody commitment at some point. After that custody commitment point, everything changes. Because this has been a state responsibility. Pardon my vernacular, but what we've done is uh these cases in the past, they've gone to kid prison. That's what DJJ is, this is a prison for youth. Now that's not going to exist anymore, we are required in our own facilities, county facilities, to house these youth. That have committed serious offenses, um that have high levels of needs. Um and require specialized and specific programs. So on that side of that decision, everything changes, which is part of the reason we're really scrambling to try and figure out, how does? which is part of the reason we're really scrambling to try and figure out, how does this work when you have fifty-eight different counties? How do you provide equitable treatment for a kid from Del Norte versus a kid from Sacramento? And that's, we're struggling with that. And that's kind of where this consortium idea comes about because it helps even out that playing field. It helps counties like us who really aren't going to be able to house our own youth because we'd likely be putting them in a solitary confinement type of situation because it's, we have one kid every thirteen years. They would be housed by themselves. The only contact they would have is program providers and staff because there's, there's no other youth there. So how do we avoid that type of situation? Which is so starkly different than, you know, again Sacramento, Alameda County, where they're able to have programs and youth where they can meet those needs. So a consortium that helps find appropriate placements for counties like us, counties like Siskiyou, who doesn't have a juvenile hall at all. You know, those are, those are the big challenges. And if we can figure out how to provide equitable service for these kids, again, hopefully with the, the idea and the hope that we can change their behavior in the long term. That's what we're struggling with and that's what we're trying to figure out. We don't have a whole lot of money to do it. We don't have a whole lot of time to do it. And frankly, nobody at the state level seems to care a whole lot about that.
Thank you. Any further questions from the board? Okay, public comment, Kylie.
Yes, give me one moment. Linda, you are on. You just need to unmute your mic.
Okay, I'm trying to understand this as a public member. So what I heard is that the juvenile hall, where you house your juveniles, is going to be closed completely by six twenty-three. Is that accurate?
So no, there's a distinct difference between our local juvenile halls and the state Department of Juvenile Justice institutions. So juvenile halls are not being affected with this change. It is, well, in a sense, but solely the state facilities, Department of Juvenile Justice facilities, that are going to be closed down and the youth that would have gone there because of their offenses and the court's orders, they're going to be required to be housed by the county in our juvenile halls.
Well, I don't see a problem with that. I, I, I probably don't understand what you do, but I don't see a problem with that. I think, but you're, okay, so, so then you're saying that they don't have the services. Is that what you're saying?
That is, yeah, that's a significant portion of it. For example, our, the one commitment that we did have last year was a case of rape in concert. So he was one of a group of individuals who raped someone. And that is why he's typically he would have and currently is in Department of Juvenile Justice custody because of the nature of his crime and the high level of risk and the high level of need for programming that he, he presents. That's not going to be an option any longer and we as a county are required to house that young, young man somehow within our facility or partner with another county who has the ability to house him appropriately in their facility and provide
What you're going to have to do is arrange it like the prison. You have an ad seg, you'll have a security housing unit and you'll have the general population. I don't know if you can do that there. I've never toured the juvenile hall. I don't know how many you can house there, but you're going to have to come up with some creative ideas. Thank you.
Other public comment, Kylie?
Chair, I'm not seeing any at this time.
So Lonnie, I appreciate your time and more importantly, bringing this important matter to our attention. We'll try not to overlook these and obviously try to get out ahead of them, but the, as Jerry mentioned, the state of California seems to be on their own path and it really doesn't support rural. So we'll lobby the best we can, but thank you for continuing to bring solutions to us on how best to address it. And hopefully the consortium could help address this component of it and help us find some solution to housing this, this type of juvenile inmate. So really appreciate your time this morning.
And I appreciate yours. Thank you, board.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to circle back around to item number seventeen very quickly to see if we can't have IT play the video and then we're going to take a quick break just after that, that segment. Dan, I'm not sure if you're with me currently, but if you could see if we can't get this to queue up again, let's try to do that before our break.
Crescent City, California, a place where the redwoods meet the sea, where Battery Point Lighthouse looks out over the mighty Pacific Ocean, where tsunamis arrive more than anywhere else in the United States. Ten years ago, we had a tsunami arrive here and out of that tragedy came hope. And that is where the story of our sister city begins.
I'm Blake Enscore and I'm here with my friend Chris Howard. In 2016, I was the mayor of Crescent City and Chris was the chair of the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors. It put us in the perfect spot to help begin building on the foundation that was laid by our students in creating a sister city relationship, a forever relationship with Rikas and Takata, Japan. As we look back over the last ten years and especially the last four years, so many things have happened that we could not have imagined.
Blake and I could have never dreamed that the relationship forged by our students could have grown so big. In 2018, we were contacted by NBC Sports, who is looking to develop stories between the host country of Japan and the United States for the 2020 Olympics. They found their story and at this time, we'd like to introduce that story, Kamome, as an introduction to the relationship between our two communities.
You better have respect for the ocean or it will take care of you one way or the other.
It's a long way from home. This twenty-foot boat discovered on Sunday night in Crescent City.
This boat had been in the water a really long time.
The vessel found to have Japanese markings and what appears to be registration tags.
I immediately suspected, ah, this could be from the tsunami.
Good evening, the nation of Japan has suffered a colossal historic earthquake that has sent ocean waters racing over land.
The tsunami wiped out everything in the city.
I decided, I don't know how I'm going to do it, but I'm going to get the boat back.
It started to become like a symbol of hope after all the devastation.
When you're standing on what used to be their main street and you look around you and there's nothing in every direction, we really understood why this small boat meant so much to them.
The momentum really started with these students embracing one another, embracing each other's culture.
It's actually really crazy. Just one boat made all of this happen.
That's the miracle just there.
Well, I'll be perfectly honest with you. I feel as if it's the greatest accomplishment of my life.
Bill Stephen is the retired undersheriff for Del Norte County. His drive to return Kamome to Rikas and Takata and his engagement with local students became the first steps in establishing what exists today. Bill was the first to dream of developing a sister city relationship, a feat that some said could not be done. Ten years after the tsunami, Bill reflects on all that has transpired.
Ten years has gone by since the devastating earthquake and tsunami in Japan, which affected us terribly here, of course, much more terribly in Japan. But a lot has happened in that time. We've had a lot of growth. We've had some extraordinary things happen, the sister city agreement and everything in between. And it all started with Kamome, the boat that drifted up onto this beach all those years ago, which was kind of the seed for what, what blossomed into what is now today and what it's become. When we went to Rikas and Takata in 2014, it was everything you can find on the internet. It was a community just devastated. It was, you know, a town that had just been wiped out. And there was a little bit of growth, a few things going on. They were building up these, these mounds because they wanted to build high, but there was just so much nothingness, I guess would be a good way to put it. Just here a couple of years ago, when we went over for the sister city engagement and I got to see it again, it was amazing. There were shopping malls, there were buildings, there were streets. It was, I was, it was breathtaking to see how much they had recovered in a few years and how much had been built up. It was such a tragic thing to happen to both communities, especially over there. But the boat, Kamome, that washed up on our beach, which was referred to, I think, as the boat of hope, Kamome, the boat of hope. And there's so much truth in that, to, to have some, such devastation and negativity occur, but then as the years go by, so many great things happen as a result of that boat washing up on our beach and, and what, what became years later. It's, it's amazing. It's, it is hope.
Futoshi Toba has served as mayor of Rikas and Takata for the last ten years. He had just been elected when the tsunami devastated his city. Mayor Toba's vision of rebuilding Rikas and Takata as a global city of purposeful inclusion has received attention from around the world. The mayor offers his reflections on our sister city relationship.
Crescent Cityの皆さん、こんにちは。栗山高田氏のトーバーとしてございます。
Senator Mike McGuire and Assembly Member Jim Wood championed the relationship between Crescent City and Rikas and Takata with official proclamations by the California Legislature. Senator McGuire offers his words of support on this day of remembrance.
Hi, this is Mike McGuire, State Senator. You know, the longstanding relationship that Del Norte has established with the nation of Japan, it was born out of shared tragedies. It's truly remarkable. The devastating tsunami of 2011 that struck Del Norte County, it's still fresh on all of our minds. And while that damage and the debris have been cleaned up, the tsunami has had, it's had a lasting impact on the community here in Crescent City. While there were some challenging years, coming back from the brink after the tsunami, this tragic event, I'm a firm believer in it. It brought us all closer together. You know, valuable lessons were learned and Del Norte County were stronger because of it. First of all, emergency preparedness, both in Del Norte County, across California and throughout this nation. It was changed by this event. We're now more aware, we're more prepared and more resilient. And speaking of resiliency, the perfect example of resiliency is the state of the art $50 million Harbor Modernization Project in Crescent City. It's, it's a lasting monument on what good can come from such a devastating event. Finally, I want to highlight the incredible sister city relationship that you have all fostered. First between Takata High School and Del Norte High, as well as the nation of Japan. The tragedies between both countries, they brought, they brought us closer together with the hard work and residence of Del Norte County leading the way. Thank you again for your incredible work and I look forward to working with you, working together in the years to come.
Today, we remember the lives lost, but we also celebrate the friendships gained, the relationships that have come because of this forever relationship that has been created between our two communities. A relationship that will provide opportunities for young people here in Crescent City and young people in Rikas and Takata to continue this relationship well into the future. We have often said that this relationship started with our children, but it is our hope that this relationship lasts long beyond the generations. Our students will continue to exchange through social media and Zoom links. Our community leaders will still look for opportunities in the future for business exchange. And our local leaders and government will look to find ways to prepare our community for natural disaster. This is the great hope for our future. No one could have anticipated what would happen on March 11th, 2011. And none of us knows what the future holds, but we do know this. We have a shared responsibility to build a better future for our children. Sister city relationships provide that opportunity to build for the generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your patience in letting us run that, that video and as part of the memorial for 3/11 coming up this Thursday. I just want to thank Reed Powell, who, as a volunteer, put this segment together for, for us. And he did such a special job. So thank you, Reed. I know you're not here with us today, but we really appreciate your time and effort to help us honor and memorialize the tragedy that occurred on 3/11, 2011. At this time, we'll go ahead and take a short break. We'll come back together. My hope is right around 12:13 or so, somewhere in there. Appreciate it and see you soon. Okay, let's go ahead and circle back, please, and get started with our next agenda item, which is Item Number 19 under General Government, and reconvene the board. So, I remember Type 19 is adjourn as the Board of Supervisors, reconvene as the Board of Equalization, and approve the assessment-appeal-withroll application for the supplemental appeals filed on APN Number 120-061-11 as requested by the Assessor's Office. Do we have a motion on this item?
I'll move to withdraw the other application.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Yeah, a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any public comment?
Chair, I'm not seeing... Yes, one moment. Linda, you are on. You just need to unmute your mic.
Is it too much to ask this board to read the item on the agenda before you vote on it? Because I don't have access to the agenda being on Zoom.
Actually, I just actually read the exact language for item 19.
I apologize.
Sorry you didn't hear it.
Yeah, thank you.
Chair, I'm not seeing any other public comment.
Okay, we'll go ahead and circle back to the vote for the board then. Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz? Supervisor Berkowitz, it looks like you're unmuted now.
Is that a yes, Bob?
Yeah, you got me. No, I'm still here.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Item Number 20, which is adjourn as the Board of Equalization, reconvene as the Board of Supervisors, and approve this side letter of agreement to amend Article 5, Section 5.3 of the Memorandum of Understanding between the County of Del Norte and the Del Norte County Employees Association, SEIU Local 1021, as requested by the County Administrative Office.
Move to approve.
And a second. And Kylie, public comment?
Chair, I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
Okay, we'll go ahead and bring him back to the board for a vote then.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Our second item then is approve and authorize the newly hired mental health clinician to start at Step C on his start date as requested by the Director of Health and Human Services.
Vote to approve.
We have a motion on the table and a second. Kylie, let's open it for public comment.
Chair, I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
Thank you, Kylie. Let's go ahead and pull the vote, please.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. All right, and we'll go ahead and move on to Item Number 22, which is approve and authorize a step increase to range A12 Step H for the Chief Probation Officer effective March 9th, 2021.
Vote for approval.
Thank you.
Second, and second as well.
And a second. Kylie, public comment, please.
Yes, one moment. Linda, you are on. You just need to unmute.
You're voting to approve a raise for the probation head? Is that what I heard?
That is correct.
Okay, I oppose that if the guy can't handle a caseload of 40 people, there's an issue. Thank you.
Okay, appreciate your comments. Any further public comment, Kylie?
Chair, I'm not seeing any at this time.
Okay, Kylie, can you please pull the vote then?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. And Item Number 23, approve and establish four new positions with the Department of Health and Human Services, Public Health Branch, approve the reclassification of three positions within the Behavioral Health Branch, and direct Human Resources to amend adopt staffing charts per Attachment A as requested by Human Resources Risk Management. Jay, if you want to cover that, please feel free, otherwise I'll take a motion at this time.
I would approve.
Okay.
I will second that.
Accept Supervisor Short's motion and Supervisor Hemmingson's second, and open it up for public comment.
Chair, just to be clear, I think Supervisor Hemmingson made the motion and Supervisor Short seconded it. Am I incorrect?
It was timed. On my side, Kylie, I don't know if it was the axis of the earth, but they both said it at the same time. So, we'll go ahead with Supervisor Short and seconded by Supervisor Hemmingson. Okay, thank you. So Kylie, public comment, please.
Chair, I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
All right, then let's go ahead and pull the vote.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes, thank you. All right, and then Item Number 24 on Agenda, approve and authorize the chair to sign a 10-year lease agreement between the Del Norte County Department of Child Support Services and North Plaza Professionals of California General Partnership as requested by the Director of Child Support Services.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself. I have a business relationship with one of the parties involved.
All right, thank you, Supervisor. Aaron, I see you're joining us today. Welcome, and go ahead and brief the board at this time.
Understood, and thank you, Chair, and good morning, board. So, I think in general it would be important to give a general overview of what got us to this point and then what led me to my decision. So first off, our department, the mission here is to enhance the well-being of children and self-sufficiency of families by delivering professional child support services, emphasizing professional here. We have 16 staff members here. This is a decrease in staffing from 30 to 40 just 15 years ago. So, our staff has decreased significantly. And in that, we have identified a need to change our facility. This is something that was brought on even by the former director. She identified the need. And so I've kind of taken up that charge because I agree with that decision and assessment. And so we're moving forward with that notion. Reasons why we are requesting a change, number one is safety for our staff and our customers or our clients. The current facility here does not provide a safe environment, and believe it or not, some people aren't a huge fan of child support. And we have had incidences with hostile climate or customers and people, random people coming into our facility. And we don't have a physical barrier other than a high countertop to protect them. Also, privacy concerns. Our current interview booths are cubicles, not very private when dealing with child support matters. So, we don't really hold that professionalism when we can't provide a private environment when dealing with our users of our services. And then something that's even more important here lately and in this presentation is tsunami. Our facility currently is at 16.4 feet above sea level. As we know in history, tsunamis here in Crescent City is a matter if, but when. So, in that same vein of safety, taking overt measures to protect our staff is important. Other considerations is the space. Our current facility is at 7100, a little over 7100 square feet. And this goes back to the original lease when we had 30 to 40 staff. Now we have 16 excellent staff members here. So, most of our current facility largely unused. As a government-funded entity, that's not good use of taxpayer money. And we can be more effective in a much smaller space because that equals out to low over 400 square feet per employee. In addition, budgetary concerns. With COVID, our last fiscal year, the one we're currently in, our department had a $417,000 decrease in funding. So, money is important, and our current facility cost is our second highest budget item for our department. So, the actual notion of budget is genuinely a big concern. Other considerations is our future operations. The actual program of child support changes. No longer are we part of the DA that changed 20 years ago where it's let's enforce, let's enforce. The new face, we actually have to solicit services. We have to win customers over. So, with that, customer service and professionalism are key. Our current facility, how it's structured, doesn't get that. It's the old methodology, it's the old perspective. And our staff are very engaging within our families, very engaging with our caseload, and they're exceptional in doing that. So, I want to be able to provide them the opportunity to enhance their abilities to do that, and a new facility does help with that. So, in general, sequence of events, I identified even prior to my deployment with the Army National Guard, the need for a new facility, a proposal was sent out, a bid was put up. It was ultimately rejected for the Board of Supervisors, which in hindsight was a great thing because this is before COVID, this is before budgetary cuts to our department. So, in the end, it's a win for our department that we are taking it to the board or taking it to you for your purview at this time. So, at the end of 2020, I requested an RFP to be issued for a competitive bid. That was issued. Part of the announcement to make it competitive, I went through the Local Realtors Association, put it into the papers, put it on the county website to try to cast our net as wide as possible. But as we know with the constraints of our local area, not too many available spaces that can fit our needs. The bids were received. There are two that were received in timely manner. The one that I'm requesting with North Plaza Professionals, and then another one with TAB, who is our current landlord. Both of them, excellent offers. Both of them provides a significant savings. Both of them meet all or most of the RFP. And I went through in the board report identifying these two. And I also provided, for transparency's sake, the entire information packet that I used to make this decision in an objective and unbiased manner. So, in that analysis, and I have all the tools pulled up here just in case it gets called out or questioned. Number one, cost is important. That budget cut that we received, money drives a lot of it. We're a public agency. We're funded by both state and federal funds. And so we have to be good stewards of that public money. So, in the 10-year lease lifecycle, the lease proposal that was given to us by North Plaza Professionals equals out to $355,000. The one that was revised by TAB is $472,000. And I double, triple, quadruple-checked these numbers because I wanted to ensure that it was in earnest. The difference in those throughout the lifecycle is it's $117,000 savings that we would have if we go with my proposal with North Plaza Professionals. And just to give optics on that, our current lease that we're in costs us $102,000 per year. So, if you look at the breakdown, that's equivalent to a little over three years of this pending lease agreement. So, once I was able to do the analysis, and provided here was that RFP comparison chart that I used as a check. I assigned them the percentage meeting RFPs. North Plaza Professionals achieved 95% of the total RFP criteria, while TAB was very close at 88%. The big delineation factor that made North Plaza Professional my recommendation is tsunami evacuation zone. Being at 16.4 feet is significant. And in addition, was the cost. It's a cost savings to us and our department. And with us being evaluated on federal performance measures, one of those measures is cost effectiveness. And currently, we rank last in the state of California, and we've been that way since 2004. And in the overall performance, that affects our ability to demonstrate to the state and federal government that we are effective at our jobs. So, just this one measure, based on the last fiscal year, we would actually move up one place. Doesn't seem significant, but in reality, we haven't been the bottom since 2004. So, it's an event for us. It's important. So, once I analyzed the results, I submitted to Futures Facilities. Unfortunately, Futures Facilities fell through for reasons of recusals and Supervisor Berkowitz unavailable to continue on. And based on recommendation from the county, the Futures Facility is used as a tool, but not required going forward. So, based on a conversation that I had with county council, recommendation was, I already know based on the input criteria of the RFP that is appropriate to go to the board and ask for a decision to be made. So, that's why we're here today versus going to the Futures Facilities. One thing I'd like to do before turning it over for questions, because I assume there's going to be plenty, is timeline. Our current lease at our facility, as I already said, it costs us $102,000 a year. If we are in this facility July 1st, we have just guaranteed another year staying here with this extension that we'd be part of. So, I would, if the decision is made, and I'm really hopeful that it would be, but if it's not and we can't arise a situation where I can have a new facility or a current facility built out, then we have committed to... then we have committed to another, another hundred and two thousand dollars to our current facility, which again affects our performance and affects our funding. Because I look at the state, they recently issued out essentially a govern- or a funding calculator. They, they came down and said, your department should be funded this amount. Current funding is one point nine million dollars. They want us to be at one point five. So the difference of four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. If we're just eating another a hundred and two in a new lease, that, that affects our performance. Now, we have a glide path. We have sixteen employees, and we have shrunk when I took over in two thousand, mid two thousand seventeen from twenty-four. So we're on track to get to the appropriate staffing to help out that. But with our facility cost being the second highest, I think we can make good progress in, in getting to the appropriate size where we're at, taking these type of measures, taking these, these cuts where we can. And North Plaza Professionals is an ideal location. They are a great partner. I work, am working with them to get to this point. Went above and beyond in every way to, to ensure that this can be successful. And you heard on the phone Kevin's on the line too, so I know he'll be able to provide some insight to you. But it has been an absolute pleasure working with them and getting to this point. So I'll pass it over. I'll do my best to answer every question. So I want everybody to feel confident that my recommendation is the right decision to make, and, and that it's most prudent. So thank you for your time.
Appreciate that, Mr. Goodwin. And more importantly, I do appreciate you providing all the detailed information as part of our agenda packet. Obviously, these discussions have gone a long time with past decision-making by the board, and basically a stalling of processes. I know, I know you've been frustrated with that process, but I think it's important that you stuck with it, and more importantly, realize the important services that we've, we've needed to get this moving along again and get Child Support Services back on track. So again, let's go ahead at this time and open it up for public comment on this agenda item. And then we could circle back with any board questions at that time. So Kylie, any public comment on this agenda item?
Yes, Chair, give me one moment. Thomas, you are on. You just need to unmute your mic.
Hello, this is Thomas Barnes. Can you all hear me?
We sure can.
Okay, great. Listen, I find this process absolutely incredible, and I mean incredible. Aaron Goodwin is now taking the, the place of Future Facilities Planning, which is a committee within your own structure, whose job it is to bring before proposed, bring proposals before committee members so that they can have an unbiased view and analysis of those proposals so they can make a educated recommendation to the Board of Supervisors so that you can make a proper decision. You have completely foregone that entire process. Aaron Goodwin and Kevin Hartwick is now your Future Facilities Planning Commission, and I find it absolutely incredible, and it's a complete disservice to do to this community. You owe it to this community to have an unbiased review and evaluation of these proposals so that you can make an educated guess. Several of the things that Mr. Goodwin stated to you are not factual and they're incomplete. However, you wouldn't know that because you have had somebody lay a twenty-eight page analysis on your laps and expect you to read it and understand it and make a decision in the few short minutes that you have. You have completely circumvented your process, and I, I actually question the legality of what you're doing. How do you know that Mr. Goodwin is not biased? How do you know that Mr. Goodwin is not in cahoots with, with Kevin Hartwick? You don't know any of these things, and I see some of you sitting there and smirking. Listen, it's your job to do the right thing for this community and this county. It's your job to make the right decisions and spend this county's money wisely. Okay, Aaron Goodwin is not your Future Facilities Planning Committee. Why don't you just get rid of the Future Facilities Planning Committee and just have one person make a recommendation to you every time you get ready to spend three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars? The last time that the recommendation was made by Mr. Goodwin, it was shot down because you had two board members that had enough sense to see that it didn't make any sense, and that it wasn't vetted properly. I'm sorry that I cannot take time to read the comments that I had prepared to, for you, but I, I find this process so disdainful and so illegal that I will challenge it legally. Trust me. I will challenge this legally. Take the proper time and evaluate these proposals and make a proper, make a proper decision and do it in this community's best interest. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Kylie, any additional public comment at this time?
Yes, give me one moment. Kevin Hawkins, you are on. You just need to unmute.
Okay, so thanks for having me, guys. I'm going to try and keep it real simple and short for you, obviously. So a couple of things that I want to hit that I think are really important to note about this whole process. Now, there's been talk about things being circumvented and processes being streamlined, but I think it's important to note that Child Support Services sent out an RFP. I received that RFP as a board, as a member of the Board of Realtors, just like every other real estate broker in town and real estate agent received that RFP directly from the Board of Realtors. At that moment, I decided to send an RFP to one of my clients who happens to be North Plaza Professionals, because we have been looking for a tenant. So going through the RFP, it made very, it made a very close alignment with the need and what we had to offer. But the things that really stick out to me, besides going line by line through that RFP and looking at the lease proposal that we did submit, we met almost every single item, and it might be by chance or just by luck, but at the end of the day, this unit that we have available is a very, very good fit for what the need that Child Support has identified. So, but I think the big things that we need to hit here are cost, suitability, and safety. Ultimately, there will be comments. I'm, I'm assuming that the cost almost seems too good to be true here, but the reality is, is we knew going into this RFP process that there would be multiple people submitting proposals. We wanted to make our proposal very competitive. So that's why you don't see a graduation of price per square foot over the next ten years. For us, it's important to have a high-quality, qualified and professional tenant here. We're in a complex of professionals, and everybody in here besides the office that I run, which is Alder Point Real Estate, has been here since approximately nineteen eighty-nine. That's a professional office that has continued tendency with the same people. I think that speaks volumes for management here as well as what we're offering. So, cost, that's pretty easy. Suitability, go through the RFP. Look, we are ninety-five percent matched. And then safety, obviously, I think Mr. Goodwin pointed out where North Plaza Professionals really shines in regards to safety, but we're outside of tsunami zone. Not only are we outside of the tsunami zone, but we're in a well-lit area and a professional area. So to me, this is, just like Mr. Barnes said, an obvious, the, the community has an obvious responsibility to be fiscally responsible, and I think that you would be anything but responsible to at least seriously consider this RFP and this proposal because we're talking about a thirty-five, approximately thirty-five thousand dollar a year annual lease versus what is significantly higher. Thanks for your time, guys.
Thank you. Kylie, any additional public comment?
Yes, one moment. Linda, you are on. You just need to unmute.
It sounds like Mr. Goodwin has done his homework well, but I do have a concern. That particular building is next to Kevin Hartwick's professional building or tax place, and it's very small, number one, for, there's no parking in there at all. So you've got sixteen employees coming, but number two, the allegations about Mr. Hartwick and little girls. I hope that the Child Support Division doesn't have children ever coming into their building. That's my.
This public comment needs to stop.
You can't stop public comments. I'll get ya.
I'm assuming that one was complete, Kylie. So is there additional public comment at this time?
Chair, I'm not seeing any other hands raised online, and I don't have any written.
Okay, let's go ahead and circle back to the board. Joel, I want to bring you into this conversation real quick because we just basically heard a threat against the county, obviously lodged by the other RFP recipient that put in the bid. I'd like to know from you, directly, this may be putting you on the spot, but do you see any concern with the expressed discussion around bypassing, in this case, the Future Facilities Committee, which was the concern, I think I heard correctly?
Yeah, I, I'm not concerned about that at all. You know, Mr. Goodwin and I did discuss that Future Facilities is an internal body. It's to benefit, you know, the department head trying to make a decision. It's a chance to fill out two board members. If Mr. Goodman doesn't need that help because he's got a clear preference and he can make the decision for what his department needs and come to the board and, and be prepared to justify it, which he's doing, the Future Facility is a tool he didn't need, and that's the conversation we had. I, I think, you know, this idea that the Future Facilities is, is a legally necessary body, that there's something illegal about this, I think is, is just not supportable, and I, I wouldn't recommend the board worry about that.
Okay, thank you for addressing that, Joel. Let's go ahead. If there's comments for Aaron at this time from our board members, please feel free to raise those. Okay, Supervisor Berkwitz?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What we've got here, in my mind, is a rush to judgment. It may not be absolutely necessary according to our county council, but it is necessary that the public be heard and that the arguments both for and con be presented. This whole thing has been bypassed, so nobody's been heard by the Future Facilities Commission. This is, this is important. We're planning on spending hundreds of thousands of dollars with no input from the general public, whether they have a vested interest or not. It's important that they be heard, and it's important that the pros and cons be heard. So I would recommend that we hold this over until we have this presented to the Future Facilities Commission.
Thank you Supervisor Berkwitz. Supervisor Starkey?
I'm relatively new here, but when, and I read this twenty-eight page document cover to cover. Like, we did have time. I just want the public to know that. We got these on Friday. We could spend the weekend going through it. With regard to Future Facilities, what Supervisor Berkwitz just alluded to is that it's open for public comment. That's not my understanding as how Future Facilities works. In the administration manual, it essentially says that the goal of Future Facilities, facilities, a lot of Fs, is to identify, develop, prioritize long and short-range plans for meeting future building, facility, roads, equipment, et cetera. So there, and there's, I read that admin manual too. Luckily, I'm with a lot of the department heads, and we're going through the admin manual, so I've become very familiar with it, and there is no direction or mandate in the admin manual that it has to go through Future Facilities. So that off the table now, and as far as the public comment, people weighing in on it, we're doing that now. And I am hoping that the people that want to voice their concerns will do that now. I just want to tell Mr. Goodwin, you did a very, very thorough job. The RFP itself was very detailed, exactly what you were looking for. And so everybody that put in for that RFP knew what the target numbers were, knew that size and location, site visibility and suitability, lease price, site parking, ADA accessibility, and ability to provide additional space was where you were at and what you were looking for. And I think that you've made a good selection, and I think you did a very good assessment, and I just want to thank you for your hard work.
Thank you Supervisor Starkey. And may I add just a little bit? Is that I have been preparing for a facility change since before I left on my deployment. One of the things that I took overt measures is IT, excellent staff there, was able to pull our infrastructure, our hardware infrastructure out of our current facility and consolidate it at the Flynn Center and the IT Department so that it allows us to be mobile, to be able to move wherever we want, as long as we have a data link. So I have been essentially clearing house here within the facility to be prepared for a move, to try to address any nondescript costs. That's why in the comparison, it's strictly the lease comparison. I attempted to identify anything else that would be added cost to try to be a significant differential. But ultimately, the costs are there. By shrinking this facility, you know, there's indirect cost savings that we also do. Our electric bill here is right, right around nine hundred dollars. You know, that, and that's heating a seventy hun- seventy-one hundred square foot facility. So now shrinking down to about three thousand square feet, you're talking savings on savings on savings that we have in this opportunity and maintaining a very un-objective, unbiased personality or attitude towards it. Because there are convenience, if TAB won out, just addressing Mr. Barnes's comment, if, if TAB won out, they would have won, and I want it, you know, there, there's convenience to staying here. I mean, ultimately, there's a convenience to not even going through this process, but it is that necessary, and I'm taking the effort. I invested hours upon hours and days upon days to get this to this point because it is necessary. I need to focus on performance and what we're doing as an office, and I want to get this thing off my back. So time is important because July first is coming up pretty quick and improvements need to be made. So, so that's why I didn't want it to be perceived as rushed. And in Mr. Barnes's comments, number one, his staff were excellent. It was a great interaction that I had with TAB, who he has working with him, over-the-top helpful, over-the-top competitive, inquisitive. So really good compliments to them. But other than the Futures Facilities, I, I didn't hear anything that specifically said this was wrong about the proposal. I think the proposal was solid. I think it's a great decision, and I really encourage approval of it.
Any other comments by the board?
I'd just like to chime in and say to Director Goodwin that I appreciated the completeness of what was presented to the board. I thought you did a, a great job of preventing, presenting both sides and giving a little history, and, and also you're taking the time to go with me through your, your facility and your, your needs and your challenges a few weeks back. I understand that through you that, you know, your, your facility's gonna, your section is going to lose quite a bit of money. This, this is definitely going to help in that, you know, with that challenge. So I appreciate your, your candor, your completeness and the, and the transparency that you, you gave in this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Short.
Thank you Supervisor, and, and I'll just ditto the comments of Supervisor Starkey and Supervisor Short, and also note Supervisor Berkwitz's comments. Appreciated. The, it comes down to this, and I think, Mr. Goodwin, you've, you've stated, you've been in the process now for quite some period of time looking for a new facility. You've recognized the challenges your current facility has faced, and you've tried to bring, year after year, to this board alternatives which would not only reduce costs but also meet the needs for your reduction of staff and to better serve your clientele. And I apologize for what has happened in the past, but I do mostly appreciate your perseverance to try to bring the county through RFP. has happened in the past, but I do mostly appreciate your perseverance to try to bring the county through RFP an alternative that will really save overall the department quite a bit of money. And that's what it's coming down to me for me today is that extensive cost savings to us. So I appreciate your time and vetting this thoroughly for us. And the lengthy 28 page report was extremely thorough. And as Supervisor Starkey mentioned, not difficult for us at all to read through, that is our job and we do it with pride. So thank you again for preparing it and I think at this time, I'd like to go ahead and receive a motion if a motion is available from the board.
I will make the motion, let me just make sure I get it right. To approve and establish, nope, that's the wrong one. To approve and authorize the chair to sign a 10 year lease agreement between the North Del Norte County Department of Child Support Services and North Plaza Professionals, a California General Partnership as requested by the Director of Child Support Services.
Thank you Supervisor.
And I'll second that.
Thank you Supervisor Short. Kylie, can you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Berkowitz?
No.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Goodwin. Your diligence pays off.
Really appreciate it, thank you Chair.
Okay, let's go ahead and take up items number 25 and 26, which is approved and adopt budget transfer item number 2-8 and the amount of $25,000 within the mental health budget to replace a vehicle that was totaled at the request of Director of Health and Human Services and then item 26, which is approved and adopt transfer of 0-02 and the amount of $69,114, transfer of $34,557 from the miscellaneous revenue and expenditures budget units asset vehicle line item to the environmental health budget units vehicle expenditure line item and to transfer 31-869 from the miscellaneous revenues and expenditures budget unit asset to vehicles line item to the building inspection budget units vehicle expenditure item to replace aging county vehicles as requested by the Director of the Community Development Department. Do I have a motion on the table for those two items?
Move to approve 02-08 and 03-02.
Thank you. Thank you Kylie, public comment.
Chair, I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
Thank you Kylie, we'll circle back around, please pull the vote.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. All right legislative and budget issues, consider miscellaneous legislative and budget matters pertinent to the county of Del Norte. Authorizes chair to sign and send appropriate letters within respective matters pending before the state and federal governments. CEO Serena, do you have anything for us today on on these issues?
There are quite a few that are out there right now, but I'm going to touch on two of them, one is SB 285, which is a Maguire bill through the Senate. It's the California Travel and Tourism Commission Bill. It would be an assessment on businesses to fund a commission and ultimately funding for tourism throughout the state of California. I think the total amount is about $45 billion ultimately. And with the intention of supporting tourism to bring California back after the pandemic and into the future. At some point, the Senator may request us to actually do a letter to the Board of Supervisors and if that's the case, it'll be brought back at the next board meeting. The second one is the stimulus bill coming through the federal government and it does appear that the the bill will be passed. It doesn't appear that there will be many changes to it, right now. The language with the federal bill would send money to local government, meaning directly to the county of Del Norte. The number is fairly significant at this point and it would be for focusing on the cost of the pandemic, revenue replacement, as well as some economic development funding. Details are to follow and we'll see what happens when it when it, as it goes through the House. So that is coming. The, like I said, the final language should be in place probably by the end of this week.
Thank you Jay, yeah, I I really appreciate it and thanks for paying attention to that legislation. Yeah, there's a way we could support Senator Maguire's through a letter from the board. Certainly would love to do that and I'm I'm sure Jerry and I through CSAC and RCRC could do the same with our state lobbies, so appreciate you bringing those to our attention.
I believe both RCRC and CSAC are supporting it at this point.
Great. Okay, any additional items?
Yeah Chair, we haven't taken up consent.
No, I mean, sorry for for Kylie.
Not at this point, like I said, there is a long list of Maguire and Woodbills that are out there that we'll have to be looking at to go through, some of them apply to Del Norte County, many of them are are not necessarily in immediate impact.
Okay, terrific, thanks for that report Jay. Okay, let's go ahead and circle back to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion on the table?
I would like to actually pull number seven for discussion.
Okay, we'll go ahead and pull number seven for discussion. We have a motion for items one through 12 then minus number seven.
So moved.
Thank you Supervisor Berkowitz.
And I can second that.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Starkey. Public comment Kylie?
Give me one moment. Linda, you are on.
Yes, item 12, I sent you all an email about that, I appreciate it if you would at least go through the FPPC to get advice on whether or not three of you who've received travel vouchers from Japan, if you can vote on Japan issues. Next, I'd like to see that we've been with the Sister City for several years and it should not be supported by the taxpayers. Everybody in the state of California has Sister City, is a nonprofit. There is absolutely no reason why somebody can't take over this as a nonprofit instead of taking, using public funding for your own benefit of a sister city. So we need to get that, we we need to get that taken care of, a 501, a C3 nonprofit group that is for the Sister City, it should not be public money, thank you.
Appreciate the comments, any other comments Kylie?
Chair, I'm not seeing any at this time.
Okay, I just, because it was kind of confusing with the public comment that was given for item number 12. This is actually a a membership to Sister City International. It doesn't have anything to do with the Sister City relationship to Japan, but appreciate the comments anyway. So at this time Kylie, if you could please pull the vote.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. All right, we're going to circle back to item number seven, which was approved and adopt a resolution for the Department of Health and Human Services Behavioral Health Branch to opt out of Assembly Bill 1976, which is assisted outpatient treatment as requested by the Director of Health and Human Services. Supervisor Starkey, did you want to hear from Health and Human Services first, or did you just want to ask the question?
I just, I I talked with Ms. Snow yesterday and I told her I was going to be asking questions, but I can certainly not put her on the spot and just explain why I'd like to maybe table this item. Mental health is extremely important and for us to provide those services is is something that I think that we should keep open. I'm not opposed completely to us opting out of this particular bill, but I'd like further discussion through the mental health, the MHSA board, which I sit on, so I can be a part of that discussion as well. I would like to have some buy-in or weigh-in from the judges locally. And I'd like to to see if we've maybe had looked to partner with other counties so that our cost savings could go down. And when I spoke with Ms. Snow, some of those things had not occurred. So at this point, I would just like to to cable it for now, if that's the right word, and bring this back to the board after we've had a chance to kind of flush out some of those issues or concerns that I have and then bring it back before the board, very well maybe for us to opt out of this particular AB bill, but we do have till July 1st and we could put that on our agenda for the next MHSA meeting to have that discussion.
When will that be Supervisor? The meeting?
I had it, I I believe it's the first week of April, but Ms. Snow, do you know?
Yeah, so actually the state is requiring us to respond to this 60 days prior to that implementation of the the deadline they gave us, so it's April 30th that we need to have a decision submitted to them. But we do have the next local behavioral health board on April 5th and that would allow us to discuss this item then and bring it to the April 13th Board of Supervisors meeting, which I think is reasonable.
Okay, so that sounds like you have some agreement there Supervisor Starkey to actually circle back around on those concerns and address those with the various individuals, including the judges that would probably have some opinion on this. So appreciate you bringing that to our attention Supervisor Hemmingson.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you, I just wanted to make a comment about the tsunami items that we've had and the Sister City agreement. You know, I I was watching TV and this was an, I think it was on the national news, I don't remember what channel or anything, but they were they were in Rikuzen Takana, Japan and showing the the seawall and the reconstruction and talking to the mayor and it was, it was really neat to see how they have rebuilt and redone. And what a great relationship that we have with them and to continue this, I think is a good thing. And why anybody would want to bring any negativism to this particular item is is kind of beyond me, but very supportive, what a, what a neat deal, I I think we're going to get the national recognition out of this in the long run. I think it's a good deal for both communities and I hope we continue that direction, thank you, appreciate that your time.
Supervisor Short.
Uh, thank you Chair. Was just curious, do we need a motion to table item number seven or was consensus good enough?
We can do it by consensus and it appears that Director Snow was okay with that, but thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you for allowing me to look into it further.
Well, you're part of this board Supervisor Starkey, so yeah, no, we we do have a little bit of time. I hopefully you guys could put that into motion because it does appear that we need to have some response within 60 days. I'm pretty sure, given the size of our community, we can do that. All right, so that pretty much concludes our agenda today, again, thank you everybody for joining us. And sorry Kylie, did you say something?
Yeah, on a part of the consent, there was a social worker proclamation.
Oh, thank you Kylie. Do I have any volunteers to read the so social workers proclamation? And I know Darren, you already took took one for the team on this, but Supervisor Starkey, if if you mind, that that would be terrific, go ahead and pull that up when you can.
And what number was that again?
Two.
Or two, all right, I just have to have my tabs, I just need to flip. I'm very old school.
It's only a tree Supervisor.
I understand that. There's not an actual proclamation, I'm just having this discussion and summary, is there a proclamation included in other people's packet?
I do not have a proclamation in mine either.
Ms. Snow, is there, was there a proclamation or would you like me just to read the discussion?
We don't have one in our electronic copies Kylie, so if if you could, Heather, do you have?
There was one. Kylie, did you have it?
They look like they locked up.
I will be happy to read it at our next meeting, which is still in March.
I can, if you can just give me one moment, I can probably find it.
While she's looking, I just want to say that I was able to tour that facility, like I said, in my report out. And and these people work so hard and I'm so happy that we're recognizing them for a whole month. And I hope that they know how much we appreciate the hard work that they do.
Yeah, that, thank you for those comments Supervisor, those, yeah, Director Snow, please ensure that your staff is is aware of the thoughts of the board as we read this proclamation into the record today.
I apologize for that Ms. Snow, it was sent to me in an email and it and I didn't print it off with the report. I, that was my bad and I completely apologize for that, I would like to read it.
Please Kylie, do 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 a great job here.
Okay, and it's a proclamation of professional social worker month for March 2021. Whereas for the past hundred years, social workers have helped America's leaders weave the nation's social safety net. It is not surprising that social work is currently one of the fastest growing professions in the United States with social workers employed by many different organizations and industries, including private and public agencies, hospices and hospitals, schools and universities, businesses and foundations, military branches and veteran centers, as well as national and public elected officials. Whereas everyday social workers address the emotional, psychological, economic and or physical needs of millions of people. And whereas the social work profession creates pathways to full participation in society and the primary mission of a social worker is to enhance human well-being and help meet the basic needs of all people, especially the most vulnerable. And whereas social workers celebrate the courage, strength and determination of the human spirit while working to empower others to hope, dream and believe in their own potential so that their families can be reunited and elders and or dependent adults can be self-sufficient. And whereas social workers help families use their strengths, resilience and self-advocacy to navigate life challenges and also help them function better in their environments, improve their relationships with others and solve personal and family problems through a wide range of services. Whereas social workers are considered essential employees, working tirelessly to ensure the health and safety of those that served during the pandemic. Social workers have always been present in times of crises, helping people overcome issues and will continue to fulfill the needs of the families, children and individuals of the community. Now therefore, the Del Norte County Board of Supervisors hereby, excuse me, hereby complains the month of March 2021 as professional social worker month in recognition of social workers and their commitment and dedication to the individuals, families and community of Del Norte County and call upon all citizens and the observance and support of social workers. Passed and adopted this ninth day of March 2021.
Thank you for doing a great job with that Kylie, Ms. Snow, I believe you're here to receive that proclamation, is that correct?
Yes, thank you so much, it's just, it's been an unusual year and our teams have been providing essential services. Everyone's tired, but we have such a dedicated, hardworking group committed to seeing our community succeed and and do their best and I'm really proud to share your sentiment with them and appreciation, thank you so much.
Thank you Ms. Snow, appreciate your time for joining us today. All right, that wraps our agenda, we're going to reconvene and close session at this time. We don't, I don't believe we'll have anything to report out and if we do, we'll do it at the next meeting, so thank you today for joining us and participating in in the memorial around our 311, 2011 tragedy and hope that is from for our community. Appreciate your thoughts and we'll see you in two weeks, take care everyone, sorry Jay.
Five minutes?
Five minutes please, thank you, look forward to seeing everybody soon.